The time is now 5:00 PM on Wednesday, October 22nd. I hereby call this finance meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Oh, excuse me, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Al Alameen, not in. Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Machet? Present. Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have four members present.
We have four members present. As soon as we receive, we will attempt to obtain quorum and then we will begin. So I see. We have now established quorum. Shall we go ahead and do a roll call again, please?
Mr. Al Alameen is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Machet?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have five members present.
There are five members present. Reading a disorderly person's city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code, Section 3110, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there any agenda changes or additions?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move the, there's a presentation.
For the opioid?
For the opioid settlement.
That would be moved.
I would like to move that to...
After public comment?
No, after council response, correct.
That would be ordered without objection. Are there any others? Okay, hearing none, it is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box will be placed at the entrance to the council chambers for a collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaking, excuse me, per speaker during public's comment, with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. Madam Secretary, who is our first speaker?
R.L. Mitchell.
Go ahead, wait a minute, we'll have reset the clock. There you go.
Like I was going to say, my name is R.L. Mitchell. I live in Flint, in the 3rd Ward, 759 East Lynn by the graveyard, Race Line. And for the record, I want to report that the ISIS, I was attacked by the ISIS peoples last week, in front of the YMCA. They, they turned it down now. I was waiting for the bus inside, then the, a service street bus came, and when I got on the bus, I got on the bus and three women's on there, looked just like the 3rd Ward and the 2nd Ward and, and the other black woman, she had a big gap in her teeth, thoroughbred black woman. My leg, my leg was just like the 8th Ward guy over there, and I just put my leg up on the thing, I got relieved, and the lady said, "No, you get..." It was a, the ISIS, the ISIS captain, general of the ISIS. She said, "What, take it?" I didn't know what she, she said, "Well, you must have from out down south." Now, I was just going to tell her, but she just kept on, her friends kept on grinning and making smart remarks. She said, she said, "I should come and just talk about my legs, and put your leg down." I ain't, my leg felt so comfortable, I just let it stay up there more as she talked. I didn't want, and then she said, "I'm gonna reach in her back pocket." Like, the 3rd Ward got a suit on, they can put their wallet in their back pocket. And this black woman, she said, "Oh yeah, I can handle you by my, our dog dragged you off this..." Kept on talking stuff, I ain't grinning at the same time, and they said, "No, I'm gonna call the rest, they're gonna take care of you when you get down to, there's only one block to go." Calling them goons, black ISIS. The people who want to know where ISIS is, they go, the people who born in United States, if you black, you look black, you, you don't even got no right in you to know what they, know what ISIS is. Thank God for the Democrats, long as they don't do nothing, you, they gonna be dealt with by them, them national guys, the national guys in here to detect the ISIS, because they getting their ass kicked while they, while we, while they jumping on people, so nobody want to tell, tell them that, and all that stuff. And before I got on prison road, the whole family of them met me down there with my bag and said, "Easy, easy, stop." And a woman, a woman in the truck, and a woman get out of the truck, had a suit on, had, she looked lipstick on, and she looked at me like, "What you looking at?" Then the whole family come in, "If them ain't ISIS, who is it?" All them black, what are they? And the Chief Green is the, the leader of the pack too. They ain't doing nothing, that's why he don't come up here and talk with himself, protecting that old stinking dope over there on St. John Street up there, old rolling, in the 3rd Ward, they saying nothing about it, and, and 2nd Ward up, talking with the 4th Ward. What, where he at anyway? He up this way, hey, stay tuned, America, we gonna see how we Flintstone get our money tonight.
Next speaker is Taylor Sampson.
Taylor Sampson, 8th Ward resident. On this agenda is an ask by the police to approve more Flock cameras. I was against the cameras last time, and I still am. I am asking the council to vote this down. Our police chief and the department as a whole has shown us over and over again that they aren't even working with the tools and budget they have. The officers are targeting residents enough without giving them more surveillance power. I believe it was the 8th Ward councilman who had previously asked the chief if he would be coming back for more cameras, and no response was given. Chief Green is never prepared, he should not continue to be allowed to ask for things and not bother to show up to council to speak to the council or residents. Flock itself is a problem. The ACLU stated, "Flock is building a dangerous nationwide mass surveillance infrastructure." Flock is upgrading their systems to connect their license plate readers to people. They are willing to share photos and videos with the police agency using, using AI. Their AI is collecting all the data on your cars. Imagine if the same car is recorded every single day on the cameras going to work. That, that car's description and the driver is being put into their database. The cloud database is accessible all over the country, so the cops could search for your car and see you driving across town, even if you didn't break any laws. They also have a Flock hot list that they can sign up certain plates to, to get alerts on. Imagine that being in the wrong hands. Flock is also involved with lawsuits in places like Virginia, Connecticut, and Oregon for violations of the Fourth Amendment, and we do not need any more possible lawsuits coming to Flint. Recently, Flock was the reason why a woman in Texas was tracked down and arrested for an about, an abortion. Flock is also allowing ICE to use their systems. That is extremely dangerous. ICE has been doing enough racial profiling and brutality, adding them to the Flock system is only going, going to lead to more violence. In case people weren't aware, the Monday, the Metro Police, Monday Township and Schwartz Creek combined, they've been considering a 287G agreement, which would allow their agents to be trained as ICE agents. That is way too close to home, and to allow that to happen with them, plus the federal ICE already being in Genesee County and have taken over 100 people just this year, most of them having legal status, we do not need to invite any more police surveillance systems here in Flint, because we know we are already a target on the federal level. We don't need to give them more power and technology to continue to do these things and team up with these other agencies locally. I really just do not want Flint to be a total police state. We already are being ran by a rogue police chief that's doing what the mayor tells him to do, and it's been on record through various people, including officers, and I just can't imagine if we gave them even more cameras, and you're not going to know where the cameras are. Oregon's actually being sued right now because they're not telling the public where they're hiding the cameras. So it's not like we would even be aware of where they're placing these. So I just really feel strongly that this is something we need to turn down. Do not give them this money.
Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
Good evening, council. Today I want to talk a little bit about the, the Democrats. And I'm not going to say that you need to vote Democratic or Republican, but I do want to bring out some things. This is a critical look at the Democrats and the black community since nineteen, or 1865. Let me ask you the first question. How long should people stay loyal that are never rewarded? Since 1865, we've seen a pattern, and it's time to call it out. After the Civil War, Democrats opposed every amendment to free and empower the black Americans. They created Jim Crow, they founded the KKK, and for over 100 years, they fought to keep the black down. Then in 1960, they changed their tune. New promises, new programs, well, let's talk about what actually changed. Look at the results. Detroit, Democratic controlled 60 years. Baltimore, Democratic, Democratic controlled for 50 years. Chicago, Philadelphia, Milwaukee, all of them decades of Democratic leadership. And what do we see? Failing schools, rising crimes, poverty, broken promises. So, every year, they show up, they make their speeches, they tell you they're going to give you better schools, they tell you they're going to make crime better, things like that. Then the election happens, and then you don't see them again for another four years. It's time for accountability. Judge politics, politicians by the results, not the rhetoric. Make the, make them compete for every single vote, because loyalty without result isn't loyalty. It's explore, yeah, exploration, exploitation. The community deserves better. And then I went through and, you know, I, I put Flint in there with this category of failing schools, rising crime, poverty, and, poverty and broken promises. And what I found was Flint, since the 1974 charter, every single mayor has been Democrat. They've all lied to get the votes, they've done what they needed to do, they'll be back in, you know, when the four years are up for more, but it'll be another years of promises, years of lies, years of declining school, more years of rising crime, and more years of poverty.
Last speaker is Tanya Jones.
Good evening, my name is Tanya Jones. I'm here advocating for my son that's part of the opioid crisis. He's autistic, and he also has sickle cell, and he was part of John Cole's case. My concern is, after I left therapy, I started getting calls about the opioid money, and my concern is Mr. Clyde Edwards. I looked up the committee or the group that's supposed to get it, and I don't understand, I don't understand why Leon got 150,000, and my understanding Clyde Edwards, name is not even on the board. So for him to get the money, I mean, you got New Path, we got Odyssey, Sacred Heart, I'm advocating for Michael. I'm advocating for my son, but what about the people that don't have nobody to advocate for them? So my main concern is the opioid money, and you know, people, you know, y'all the council, just vote right for it. And Ms. LaShawn, Art said, give you a chance, and all I'm asking you is, I had a whole case with the PPO, I have bigger things to fry. So I just hope that you do right by the community, you know, you know what I'm saying? We bumped into each other at the St. Marks. So all I'm just asking, you know what I'm saying? You said you, you met my son, so I'm just asking you, would you least consider, I know you gotta do, you gotta get it how you live, okay? We call you a rubber stamp, but just do what's right for the people. I'm not going nowhere, you know what I'm saying? I'm here, like I said, my, my father is Black Lives Matter, Hubert Roberts. If black lives really matter, I'm his oldest daughter, that's his grandson. What had black lives really mattered for Flint? All they did is travel the country, if you look at their page. So I'm just saying, it is not about taking a bullhorn, going around talking about Black Lives Matter, it's about action. I'm out here, I got other stuff I could be doing, but it's about action, and like, people get out here and really doing it. Don't just talk, don't just get grant money or just get money donated or whatever, it's bigger than that. I wish my father was here doing this, and I guess what, I could be sitting here saving my son, working on my son, but I'm out here. Every time y'all get a chance, basically pleading to y'all to do right by the people, because I'm not going to give up on mine. And like I said, what I'm going through with my son, it can happen to anybody, and I have friends OD. This, this is real, this drug is real. What's, what's out here in this community is real, and I just wanted to just tell y'all, it's real, it's real, it's real. When it hits y'all family, then y'all gonna be like, "Oh, that's what Tanya was talking about." But I hope y'all as strong as me, because it's real, and just like, that's real, God is too. Have a good night.
That was the final speaker.
Thank you very much. It's now time for council response. Council members, may I respond once to all public speakers, only after all public speakers have spoken? An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to address the public?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you to all the speakers who came, and yes, opioid and drug addiction and abuse is very real in our community. We've been receiving opioid dollars for a couple years now, with no plan for it. We do have it on tonight, where there's a million dollars, and I do have some questions about, I have a lot of questions about it, because it's a serious problem. And it does not affect just one race anymore. You, you don't, it's not a drug that's just for a black race, a white race, it's, it's everywhere. It's, it's everywhere for every race denomination. I do want to invite the public to the Hasselbrink Center. They are having a ribbon cutting this Friday. They have found a new home, and they will be having a ribbon cutting, and they want the community to come out to share with them. There's a lot of festivities that are going on, it'll be, they're located at 2111, 2111 Flushing Road with Cavalry United Methodist Church, that is where they are now located. They're no longer on Home Avenue, so they are at 2111 Flushing Road, and they're asking for the community to come out to support, to fellowship. They've got a lot of different things which are actually going on for that evening, to share with the community and for our seniors. They didn't go anywhere, they just went to a place where they were loved in the community. They're located right on the edge of Mott Park, which is a wonderful thing, because Mott Park has welcomed them. We want to make sure we take care of the least of these in our community, in our seniors. So again, it's going to be this Friday, October the 24th, is going to be their ribbon cutting, and they're asking for the community to come out to share that with them. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Anyone else? Hearing none, it's now time for our special order. It's for the opioid settlement allocation for the Greater Flint Health Coalition, and it was requested by myself regarding a presentation for the settlement. Go ahead. We're going to limit this to 20 minutes with questions. That's true. Okay, yeah, how long is your presentation?
It can be as long or as short as you want it to be. 20 minutes is fine with questions? Yeah, we can always chat more.
Yeah, because when it comes up for vote, then we'll have time to discuss it as well. Okay.
I've got brought some literature to share.
I think it should be like a 25 minute, just in case, because again, everyone might have questions, and so a lot of times it's going to be eaten up in between them doing the actual, and then people having questions.
Okay, that's no problem. I have no problem with that.
I'll just wait, oh, I'll say, okay, all right. So, first of all, thank you, council members, for allowing this time today. Oh, can, I'm so tall, there we go. Thank you for allowing us to have this time today in the meeting to talk about the proposal we put together to assist the city of Flint to allocate these to assist the city of Flint to allocate these settlement dollars from the opioid epidemic settlement in a meaningful and purposeful way. My hope through this proposal is that we can add structure, accountability, data collection, and get these dollars into the hands of as many partners in a diverse and multi-sector manner. I think one of the last gal that spoke here said something really impactful that I want to highlight. We want to make sure that these dollars get into the hands of the people that are impacted by the opioid epidemic. And there's a lot of different ways to do that. So I'm just going to kind of start by turning your attention into the folder. The Greater Flint Health Coalition has been in this space of mental health and substance use since 2011. We've established, we established a mental health and substance use task force. That task force represented our behavioral health systems, treatment providers, prevention providers, the school systems, other health officials, elected officials, community members at large, really with the goal of understanding what the barriers and gaps are to address mental health and substance use in the community. Obviously, that escalated with the hit of the opioid epidemic. So you saw a task force that came together in an advisory sense shift around 2017, 2018, to really become action-oriented. In that process, we developed a community-based strategy model, which is this large map in your folder. In 2022, we developed this robust strategy to really identify not only all of the different buckets. So you'll see prevention, harm reduction, treatment, recovery, behavioral health, social determinants of health. Those are all the things that affect people in our community. And when you add substance use to that, it becomes very complex. So we developed this map to help us understand not only what areas we should be looking at, but what sectors of the community should be involved, and what activities we should be working on in a collaborative nature. So we've been doing this work for a significant amount of years. Through that, we've established relationships and understanding of who's doing work in an effective, evidence-based manner. And that has really allowed us and positioned us to be in a place where we feel confident that we could assist the city of Flint in allocating funds through a RFP process that would ensure these dollars get into the right hands. Because I'm sure, as you're aware, when the settlement dollars hit, everybody had their hand out. Everybody under the sun says, oh, what we do fits under opioid prevention or opioid treatment. Oh, we do this, we do that. But really, without having someone vet that and make sure that we're doing our due diligence, you might get into a situation where the right money gets into the wrong hands. And we want to come alongside of the city and be a supportive partner to ensure that these dollars are allocated to the right people in the right amount. And that we're also tracking data. So we can say, hey, we gave them these dollars, we demonstrated that it works, and then we're building sustainability. So we can continue these efforts, because we know the settlement dollars aren't going to last forever. So with that said, I'll direct your attention to page 10 of the blue packet. There are two packets in here. The blue packet is the $1 million, one-year proposal. We did build a multi-year proposal as well, which we feel would have a larger impact overall if we were to provide a larger level of investment to allow for more grant dollars to be allocated into the hands of the community. So I'd like to take a little bit of time and just walk through what we're proposing so we can have, hopefully, some good dialogue. I can hopefully answer questions that you have about what we're seeking to do. So the first allocation we'd like to create, again, these are all RFP proposals, is two, up to two grants for our treatment provider partners. These would be all partners, only partners that are licensed, certified, credentialed, have a longstanding of serving the residents of the city of Flint. And this would be invite-only. Again, the reason behind invite-only is to make sure that we have a controlled process, and we're not letting anybody under the sun apply for those dollars and then be surprised when they didn't meet the criteria. So we're trying to keep this controlled to protect really efficiency and make sure that we're doing no harm. So the goal of this would be to allocate up to $125,000 per grant award. And that would be to support our SUD treatment and some potentially prevention agencies within the city of Flint. If they serve outside areas, fine. But our goal is to really serve the people of the city of Flint. And again, that would be invite-only. Number two would be our community-based organizations. Again, up to two grant awards, not to exceed $125,000 apiece. And that would be with the goal of supporting community-based organizations that are involved in programming that would address the opioid crisis, promote recovery, or support families affected by the opioid crisis. So that one's a little bit more broad. We do want that to be an eligible 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The goal here would be to make sure that there's demonstrated evidence of effectiveness. We don't want to have someone start a new nonprofit. We really want someone that has been established in the community knows what they're doing so we can trust that the effect that we want to have is actually going to happen. The third allocation that we're recommending through this RFP process is to grassroots community groups. This would not exceed a total of 10 grants, so a larger pool. And this would be up to $25,000 apiece. And the goal here would be to fund our grassroots community groups and support them to develop innovative and localized initiatives that would address opioid addiction in the community, support effective prevention strategies, and again, provide support for those who are impacted by the opioid epidemic. The eligibility for these can be either a 501(c)(3) or an established fiduciary agent that would be able to support the financial management of these dollars. Again, to control and make sure the investments that you're making from the settlement dollars are being managed and spent as intended. The last category that we have in this request for the one-year proposal RFP process is bereavement support for children. It is estimated in the state of Michigan that there are roughly 1 million children who have been abandoned because of the impact of the opioid crisis. And the fact of the matter is, there are limited resources to support those children. Now we have grandparents taking care of children. We have family members, or even just community members, out of the goodness of their heart, taking care of children who have lost their family to this epidemic. There are agencies in the community that can specifically provide targeted support for children who've lost loved ones to addiction. And these dollars would go directly to those organizations for that purpose. We've named $75,000 to go specifically to Ellie's Place and Voices for Children because they have established programming, they have staff that are certified, licensed, credentialed. They have the capacity to provide this support. So that is kind of what we've come up with in terms of how we'd like to support the allocation of the funds. We'll develop this RFP process to make sure that it's inclusive, especially for our grassroots community groups. We want to make sure that we're not unintentionally leaving them out just because they're not familiar with how to apply for a grant, they don't know what effective prevention, treatment, recovery looks like. So we'll be hosting a series of workshops to make sure that they understand what evidence-based work looks like as we're addressing the opioid epidemic. We'll help them understand what is allowable in terms of what you can spend the opioid settlement dollars to provide support for. So we don't want to just throw it out there and say, maybe you'll meet the criteria, maybe you won't. We want to provide hands-on support. So we're building the capacity of our community members, our neighborhood block clubs, our churches, our after-school programs, you name it. We want to make sure that we have a pathway to give to them, and that we're also walking that path with them so they're not doing things that we know aren't effective, right? We know now that our, that the field, especially of prevention, is now a science, it used to be an art. So things like mock car crashes, and the drunk goggles, and the Just Say No campaigns, those don't work. Evidence shows those have no impact in actually addressing the long-term likelihood of somebody using a substance. So we want to make sure that the dollars we give to our community-based organizations and our grassroots community groups especially are rooted in evidence-based, science-backed approaches. Because we don't want to just throw money at the wall and see what sticks, right? We don't want to just think we know, we want to know that what we do is going to have an impact. Because we've already been devastated by this crisis, right? So we want to make sure that we're providing that training and that support so they can do, they can do good things that actually have an impact. One of the last things I'll share, and then I'll leave it to questions, because I know there are many. We also want to have an evaluation process built into this, because we want to demonstrate that this works. We don't want to just throw a bunch of money out into the community and say, well, we did our job. We want to say, here's all the things we funded, here are all the outcomes we identified, here's what worked really well, here's where maybe we had some lessons learned, and we like to do things differently. The goal of that would be to support sustainability. Maybe it can't be funded by settlement dollars forever. These money, these dollars aren't going to be around forever. But it builds their capacity to show effectiveness to other funding streams. So this is a way for us to tackle innovative approaches, things that other grant dollars might not cover. There are limitations with state and federal dollars. But these dollars can be relatively unrestricted based on what's allowable in the opioid remediation strategies in Exhibit E, which is also included in your packet. There's a lot of confusion around what does it cover, what doesn't it cover? Candidly speaking, I've been working in this space around opioid settlements basically since they announced the settlements were coming. This is something that's near and dear to my heart. I have nothing to gain from it beyond just an absolute passion to support our community members and really make an impact and bring down the numbers of families and individuals that are affected by this disease. So with that, I'm going to pause here. We've got 13 minutes left for questions. Fire away.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Definitely appreciate you coming. So mine are going to be blue packet specific. I know you said that the orange packet is a multi-year decision, whereas the blue packet is just for one year. And I've tried to get through as much as I could with this. I guess my first question is, this is just for the record. With both of these agreements, the city attorneys have already reviewed both of these agreements, correct? Have you had an opportunity to look at them?
Madam Chair, I do not have an answer to that question.
Okay.
I personally have not seen them.
Okay. With the invite-only, will the city council or the administration, someone get a copy of the list of who the invite-only people are?
Yeah, if that's something that you'd like to see, absolutely.
Okay, and then, I know that you said there might be some organizations that are going to get an invitation that serve other areas other than Flint. What are the controls in place to make sure that these dollars only go to Flint residents?
So I think the challenge with that is all of the agencies and organizations, we can't necessarily control to ensure that a certain pot of money is only used for those. But the focus would be to ensure that it's specifically for those that serve the greatest amount of Flint residents. So we would have a control for that. We'd want to see data to demonstrate, show me the number of people you're serving that live in the city of Flint. Show me the number of residents you're serving. If that number's low, then they're not eligible. So the target would be to make sure that we're providing support for organizations and agencies that primarily serve residents. But we also see a lot of people come into the city that don't live here and have issues. And so we want to also alleviate that burden that we see coming into the city. So there's value in supporting not just residents, but also supporting organizations that serve those that live in the outside area because of that traffic that drives into the city.
Okay, and I see you have dollars set aside for bereavement funds, which I think is absolutely an excellent idea. 100% applaud that. Is there a check and balance for that? So you're going to give the 75,000 to the organization. So is there, do you have parameters in place to see? So you're giving them 75,000. So are you saying with this 75,000, a family cannot exceed 2,000 or 3,000? Like, how are you making sure that these dollars will be, have the most impact, but then also serve who needs to be served? And then my second follow-up to that is, can families get funding more than once? Because we do have a lot of families who may lose more than one loved one to addiction.
Yeah, both great questions. I think the parameters of how those dollars will be allocated will really be left up to both Voices for Children and Ellie's Place when they apply. This is an invitation. They're not forced to take it if they don't want to. But really, this is something that we'd like for them to create and to develop a specific support program for people who are impacted by the opioid epidemic. They're likely already serving a great amount. So I don't want to speak for them in terms of how they would do that, because I don't have all of the finite details of their inner workings of how they run their programming. But there will be controls for that, to understand that.
I am going to use a word that is very difficult to do when you have families that are in the middle of opioid crisis, and they're in the middle of someone who has overdosed and unfortunately passed away as a result of that overdose. But with that, my only concern there is the equity of that, right? What happens, again, when one family is chosen, they're going to get 2,000 dollars, and another family's going to get 5,000 dollars? Like, what is the check and balance in place to decide? Everyone either gets the same amount across the board, or these are the specific, you know, parameters in which you might get more allocated to you? And then also, with that allocation, is it this family, even though you might have more than one family member who has someone who passes away, you still can only get this one pot? So you now have a child who's an orphan. Mom and dad both passed away, there's no way for that child to bury that parent. But so does it become, okay, if dad passed away first, you're only getting money for dad? Or is it, we're going to give money for mom? And I'm just, those are kind of things I'm wondering with this bereavement fund, of how that's going to work. But we'll move on, because you said that that'll kind of be up to the organizations. And I got to hurry up, because I'm on other people's time. With the process of your overview process, I'm just wondering, how much of that process will the city be made aware of? Because I'm looking at, when we get down to like proposals and submission, is it that we'll just, if we're getting anything, is it that we'll just get one whole thing with your timeline on there? Or is it as things move, or after things move? I just want to know what the notification process will be, if there will be a notification process of how you're moving through that.
That's a great question. I think that's something that we can design together. I think being this our first time to really chat through this and how we'd like it to look, I think we're happy to share information in a timely fashion of your choosing. In terms of the allocation process, in terms of data collection, we do have a quarterly report built in. So you guys will have an understanding of how things are going. So it won't be a, oh, we gave you this money, and then a year later, I wonder what happened? There'll be regular updates. So you'll be aware of the data collection, what the data is showing. Obviously, anytime, I think another beautiful thing about this is we want to make sure we elevate the fact that this is an effort that the city has put in place, that these dollars, it's not something that the coalition is doing. We're helping support it and provide that program administration and funding process. But really, we want to elevate the fact that you guys made this possible, that this is something that the city is doing. And so I think we can co-create what that transparent process looks like, so we're all comfortable.
All right, and this is my final question, because again, my colleagues do have questions as well. And then, I'm wrapping it up, Judy. And I see that there are some more, but I was trying to like, listen and read and write at the same time. But then my final one is the evaluation committee. How is the evaluation committee going to be chosen? Has it already been chosen? What's the criteria for that committee?
So we'd like to work with Michigan State University to be an evaluation partner, given their extensive history in the community. We've already had wonderful longstanding partnerships with them and other evaluation capacities. So we'd really like to give that work to them. I will say, that is really more well-reflected in the multi-year plan. It's very difficult to do a short-term evaluation and show kind of the outcomes that we're looking for. And so the evaluation on the one-year plan really more so looks like us pulling together the data, sharing both qualitative and quantitative data to measure impact and demonstrate that this works. But like I said, there is more robust information about evaluation in that multi-year plan.
And thank you. And Madam Chair, before I yield my time, I do want to make a motion that we add 15 more minutes, because I did know we were going to run into this problem with several people having questions.
There's a motion on the floor to add an additional 15 minutes to the discussion item. Is there support?
Support.
It's supported by the councilwoman in the second ward. Roll call vote, I guess, because we won't do all the favor.
And then I yield. Mr. L. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machet?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no?
The vote is seven yes, zero no, so we now have 20 minutes and 47 seconds.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Lewis, huh? Okay, 21 is fine. Dr. Lewis had asked for the floor. Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so a few things.
One of the things that you said was about Michigan State for evaluation. So is Michigan State, are they the only entity that does evaluation in the city of Flint?
I would imagine not. They're just the ones that we've utilized the most. They've also been an excellent partner through the Recast grant as well. So we just have established relationships that would make it more timely to get it up and running. So we're not kind of having that like getting to you phase.
Okay, so as an evaluator with a PhD in that, it kind of gave me a little pause because we want to make sure that this is fair. And so we just don't want selected partners already pre-selected. We want everyone to get opportunity to work. And what if University of Michigan would do a better job than Michigan State? So it'd be a great idea for individuals to have an opportunity to apply, to be able to, you know, to contribute to these effective dollars. And so I really would like that to be rethought. And then when we go on to the invited list slash the control list, so how do you select or who you're going to invite?
So I think it's a lot easier on the treatment provider side because there's a smaller list. So all of the treatment providers in the county will be invited to apply, but we're only able to give two awards. Only able to give two awards because we've controlled the number of dollars that we're trying to push out here. If we wanted to utilize more of the settlement dollars, we could make it a larger pool. This is just an example of how to, we're kind of trying to fit everything into one box under a small budget. But all the treatment providers that are licensed and credentialed and certified that serve the residents of the city of Flint will be invited. But as the proposal is listed currently, only two will be awarded.
Okay, so I guess, again, I have an issue with just the special invite list. So you're saying that you have a pre-selected list of invited applicants that you're going to invite to apply for these money?
Yes, and that's really to ensure that they have a good standing history, that they're working well with other community partners. Again, we've had a task force specifically bringing together all of the known players in the community that are working on this issue. And we want to make sure that
Okay.
we're not giving it out to those that are kind of just coming in.
Okay, well, let me add this on behalf of those that are just coming in. You know, we have a lot of people that have not been, I guess, on the, I mean, they're brand new. You know, they see a need and they want to jump in the game and they have brand-new ideas. And so I don't think that's fair for them to be cut out because they have not been established or working for years. It needs to be some space. So new organizations, new people, new, we have new graduates, we have people coming home, wanting to get involved. And they should have an opportunity to be invited or be selected. And by this invite, this is saying that that's not happening.
I'll just jump in there to say that the $10,000, $25,000 for the grassroots group, that's really intended for those up-and-comers that have really great ideas, maybe aren't at the level of some of the more established organizations. But we want to help build their capacity. We want to help show effectiveness. So maybe this year, maybe this round, there are $25,000 grassroots award. But coming back next year or the year after, they've really boosted their capacity. They're doing more, they're demonstrating solid outcomes. Then they graduate potentially to that larger list where they're more competitive for that $125,000 award. Again, these are just numbers we've come up with based on the small allocation amount. We can customize this however you want to because the settlement dollars that the city of Flint has been awarded are insurmountable. It's a large pool of funding. So I don't want us to get stuck on the limitation of number of organizations or who will be at the table because you can choose to allocate more dollars. We can choose to allow a wider pool. This is just a very narrow scope because of the limitation of the dollars we're asking for, just to kind of get started.
Okay, so my other question is, so we have Office of Public Health. So what role are they playing in making this come to fruition? Do you currently work with them on this initiative?
We've had conversation. I know that there has been some settlement funds allocated to support the Office of Public Health. We have good working relations with the staff of that office. We're absolutely willing to make this a collaborative joint effort.
So you said willing, so you haven't done so yet?
We've had conversation, but there's no work that's really happened yet. So it's really just a conversation between teams.
Okay, so, okay. So are you aware that our public health office has an opioid plan and partners?
I'm not aware of the plan, but I know they've been working in this space to ramp it up.
Okay, yeah, well, I highly want to invite you to reach out to our public health navigators, our director of that office, because she's been working in this space. And, yeah, she's been working in this space. And I definitely would like to hear more about the review committee when it's time because I see that it's going to be comprised of representatives from the Greater Flint Health Coalition and other community stakeholders. Just real quick before I acquiesce the floor. So what are, who are the stakeholders, the other community stakeholders you're referring to?
So those are to be identified. Ideally, they would be folks that are representing the city of Flint. So they're either working or residents of, that have a vested interest in this space. We want to make sure whoever's on that review committee understands what they're reviewing, right? We don't want to bring people to the table that don't understand prevention, treatment, recovery. We want to make sure that it's fair, unbiased, that they have experience and knowledge coming into that. So the vote, the review process is fair. And so that's really to be determined. There'll be a request for those who are interested and then they'll be selected based on that.
Thank you. And this will be put out, is it citywide? The request will be put out citywide or is it going to be a special invite as well?
I think it'll be put out, there'll be a small number of invitations for specifically community members. And then the others will be by invitation, again, based on those partners, those folks that we know from the community and from organizations and agencies that have the experience and knowledge to make good, like rooted decisions that are going to enforce like
Okay, so I'm going to pass the time, but just so you know where I stand, I don't like gatekeeping. And so it sounds like it's who we choose, who we select. And when we have a community of people, talented people, qualified people, and I want those that want to help, those that want to be a part, I want them to have an opportunity to at least be, to have the option to apply and to be at the table and not just those that are on the invited list. So thank you, that's my time.
Thank you. Ms. Burns?
Thank you. Thank you, welcome. And thank you, former Senator Ananek, for being here. I do want to say I have been asking and I appreciate, this is a comprehensive opioid plan because it's even dealing with some categories that we need to get into. Getting all this material right now, I'm a reader and I like, I literally read and take notes. And so, but thank you for providing it. So one of the questions is the bereavement only is for children, is that correct?
That's the starting point, yes.
Okay, so it's only for children and it is not burial? It is for counseling services to get them through, to make sure, you know, because they've seen a lot.
Yes.
You know, when you're having a parent who was a drug-addicted parent.
Yes.
So with that part, as I was reading it, then my other question is, I'm going to try to be, we could actually do three, four, five hours on this, to be honest with you, because it is just that serious in our community. So the, one of my concerns is, you said it's not, everyone just, and you're with the Genesee County Coalition, which means it's a county project, correct?
So we're the Greater Flint Health Coalition?
Okay.
Yep, yep.
But you take everyone that comes in?
And so we do, we do a lot at the Greater Flint Health Coalition.
Yeah.
So I, yes, but we have specialized targeted projects that focus on certain populations.
So one of the things that you stated, and I'm not against you, let me state that, I know, you know, I am not, and I'll call Senator Ananek later to bend his ear to no end. So when we have, what percentage, so if you have a program, is there a percentage that, for that program that they have to have, is there a target number of residents, like 75%, 60% of their, who receive these funds have to be Flint residents? Is that a requirement?
Absolutely.
Do we have, like, so is it per agency or is it just the overall?
I would say for the purposes of these dollars, we should certainly control for that, that they can demonstrate that they are residents of the city of Flint or have lived in the city of Flint. I think too, the other point that was brought up about, I think of the same effect, we just also want to be cognizant that so many people travel into the city. And I think it is beneficial to serve those folks as well because we want to make sure that they're well-cared-for and that they're not
So we're saying for the addicts who may come to the city to get their drugs and they go back out to the suburbs?
Or perhaps they have an overdose here.
So, yeah.
They come in, they have an overdose. We want to make sure that we can get them the help that they need while they're here and send them back home so they can be well.
So you're only asking for a million? And I think the last time I checked, we had six million or so in opioid funds, and 30% of our opioid funds can be used for something other than treatment, prevention, intervention, which I don't like that because I would like for it to be used to help addiction. I don't like that it's been siphoned off of at all. Not at all. My other question is, are there any other like funds that, for the program, are you leveraging other funds? And what are some of the funds or agencies that you have?
Absolutely, thank you for asking that question. So I can say that we have been in communication with Genesee County. They also have a large allocation of opioid settlement dollars. I've been in constant communication with them over the past few years. And they're very interested in having a collaboration so we can have a bigger impact.
And I'm, and I'm not being rude, please don't, I don't want to give them, this is my last. So what is the total amount to fund all of this?
So in the
Because you're only asking us for a million.
In the blue packet, there's a million. In the orange packet, it's 6.325 over five years.
Okay.
So we, I wanted to build it out larger so you guys could have an idea of what this would look like beyond the scope of one year, if you wanted to make it a longer-term approach as a way to get these dollars out into the community.
So I have more questions, but I'm going to yield my time. I will be calling you, so be prepared, Senator Ananek, because I had a ton of, thank you for your time and thank you for making sure this was comprehensive because a lot of the things that people don't see, we see them on social media that people slumped over a wheel or in my neighborhood, found dead at a church on the church steps. And then the girlfriend was found behind the building. But this is covering, this is comprehensive. Thank you for taking this time. We may need some tweaks, but thank you for that. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Can I say something first if you don't mind?
Oh, go ahead.
I mean, I think to the point you just made about tweaks, I mean, obviously, we put together a proposal, but it's a partnership. And it's your dollars that came in through the settlement dollars. So if there are changes or things that need to be addressed, you know, whether it's one year or five years, the point would be, we want to address and adapt. If we see something that's not being done, it's not about trying to gatekeep or anything, things like that, legitimate points. But it's about trying to take the dollars that were suggested to us for a million and for the first batch, to try to make sure that they go as effectively and as far as they can. But it's not about, you know, we would learn and would want to work together on trying to make sure that they're going as best as possible and the most efficiently as possible for residents of Flint. And I just wanted to make sure I said that because you guys have brought us some great questions and great points and I don't want to take your time, Councilwoman, so I just wanted to just say that real quick. Thank you.
I just, good afternoon. I just have one question. How specifically are you going to help the Flint residents?
How specifically are we going to help Flint residents?
Yes.
So that's a loaded question. I can see why you only have one. So our plan to help Flint residents is by making sure dollars get into organizations and agencies that provide services that support Flint residents. We want to build their capacity. I think a lot of the challenges that we see in grant funding that's available right now outside of opioid settlement has restrictions. And so there are really great things that they can do, but they aren't allowed to do because the funding doesn't cover it. So by allocating these dollars to these different entities and grassroots community groups as well, we're making sure that we're filling the gaps and addressing those barriers and even looking at new solutions that can support Flint residents. So it's a very broad question with a lot of different multifaceted answers, but that's kind of the best way to package it. We really want to make sure that we're doing things differently and leaning into the things that work because we know that people are dying daily. People are overdosing, families are torn apart. We want to make sure that we're reducing the likelihood of that and we're changing generational cycles so people aren't having those experiences and then ending up in the county jail and then going back into the community and going through that cyclical process. We want to break the cycle of addiction in families and giving these dollars out to the community partners that are doing these effective things is the best way we know how.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome. I just have a couple of questions. What is the timeline for program rollout once you get the funds? And I guess you have other funds that you're working with as well, right?
Yes, so our timeline really, once this becomes an official project, if when, we'd like at least two months to build the RFP process. And then we want to make sure there's ample time for our partners to be notified. We want to have some time to provide those workshops for our community partners, especially at the grassroots level, so they can have time to digest and learn. And so I would say about three months of just building up, preparing, making sure the community is informed. And then we'd like to issue the RFP process and have things up and running. I would say if we're thinking about this from a quarter-by-quarter perspective, by quarter two, we'd have applications in hand. By quarter three, they'd be up and running and allocating dollars. And those are very loose estimates. It could be faster than that, but I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver.
And you guys will make sure that the council knows every step of what's going on, right?
Absolutely, yeah, we don't want any surprises.
Now, okay, once the initial $1 million is expended, what mechanisms do you have in place to sustain this project or whatever is going on with this after the $1 million?
That's a great question. Ideally, we'd have more than one year because that's really just a drop in the bucket when you're thinking about making long-term change. So what I can say in a one-year timeframe is we will turn that data over to the partners that receive the dollars so they have the evidence, they have the hard data that shows, here's what we did with these dollars that the city of Flint gave us. Here's how we've improved our capacity. Here's the impact we made. And then we're willing to come alongside of them and help identify other funding streams.
Okay.
So we want to make those warm handoff connections, support them, provide any kind of technical assistance with grant writing and whatnot, introduce them to other partners. But really, from a sustainability standpoint, for us, our whole goal is to get the city of Flint dollars out into the community to help, to help make that happen. So from a sustainability, once that's done, our role is done and hopefully, we've boosted capacity and made an impact.
Right, okay, that sounds good. Madam Chair, I'll yield.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jarrett.
Good evening. If I understood, you're saying it might be two quarters to sort of ramp up to get between, you know, your first quarter where you're setting the framework, issuing the RFP, RFP being received or responses. And then that third quarter is when the actual servicing would begin, is what I'm sort of
These are very loose.
I understand.
Yeah, that's probably an overstatement.
I'm sort of getting to this point. So should we be, if the actual servicing might be six months out and we're talking about a one-year project, should we maybe be talking about an 18-month project to give the servicers time to provide the service? Because even at that point, if I'm understanding the proposal correctly, only 100, or at most $100,000 would have been used in that first two months for your administrative needs. So it really, we really aren't getting to the larger portion of helping or serving persons directly until months, you know, five, four, five, six. So might we look at, might we need to look at the actual length of the contract or allow for time for the providers to provide service beyond what could be just six months?
I agree with you. I think I was being a little generous with the timeline.
No, I don't doubt that. It could take that. And I appreciate you being conservative, so to speak.
Yes, yeah, the overpromise and underdeliver is the absolute worst. Um, I think, uh, a longer timeframe does make sense in terms of doing this the right way. Another thing that I don't like to do is rush through things just for the sake of getting it done. So we want to get this right. Um, and there's no reason to rush through it. So if we have some flexibility on timeline, I think that's a, a benefit to everybody involved. Um, so we're, we're certainly not married to a one-year timeline or an eighteen, like, whatever makes sense, whatever we all feel comfortable with is what we want to go with.
Okay. And, and my other question, sort of follow-up to one of the questions asked earlier. And it was asked sort of to our council or to our, uh, attorney. Have, have you provided this packet to the administration for them to review prior to tonight?
So we, we've had conversation over the years. I've had conversation with other legal officials from the city over time. Things obviously have changed. Um, but we'd welcome the opportunity to, to have that conversation and make sure they're comfortable.
But for them to have seen the outline of what's being proposed in this, in this, um, agreement? In this particular agreement?
They have not been provided with this.
All right.
To my, yeah.
All right.
Oh, wait. Shame is us.
We'll have more opportunity to ask questions as we get into the resolution. So I'm going to conclude that special order and close that out. And go on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the cons- or to send the consent agenda to council? Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved by the councilwoman in the seventh ward, seconded by the councilwoman in the second ward. Is there any separation?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to separate two five zero three five two dash T. I'd like to separate, uh, two five zero three three five dash T.
Hold on, hold on, I'm in the wrong agenda. What was the first one that you had separated?
Two five zero three five two dash T.
Okay.
Two five zero three three five dash T.
Okay.
There is one more, but if they let it go, I'm gonna let it go. Thank you.
Are there any others?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to separate three five zero three five zero.
Okay. There any others? Hearing none, the consent agenda will consist of two five zero three four nine Burger Chevrolet My Deal Contract Two Three Quarter Ton Pickup Trucks for the water plant. And two five zero three five one for, um, La Fontaine Ford Five Corgo, Four Five Ford Cargo Vans for the Water Service Center. Brokow, please.
Mr. L Alamein is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
You have six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. Those resolutions will be sent to council. And now our first separation is two five zero three five two. Uh, allocation of opioid settlement funds, Greater Flint Health Coalition. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I move that we send this resolution to council.
Is there support?
For the purposes of discussion, support.
Okay. It's been moved by the, um, councilwoman in the second ward, supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, if they could join us, I'd like to turn again.
Once again, come on up.
Um, and again. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Long time no see. So just really quickly, and I do thank you for the, uh, correction on the bereavement. Again, I was moving through it quickly and I was thinking, that's crazy. I've never known those organizations to pay for death benefits, but if they're gonna do it, let's do it. So thank you for the correction on that. And if at any point in time, trust me, thick skin up here, so feel free to correct if something is incorrect. That, that way we know what we are supporting or not actually supporting. Um, I do understand that you've given us two options here, right? Uh, and because we literally have just gotten both of these options just now, I'm sure this is a wonderful orange packet. Um, but I, because I haven't even had a chance to look at it, I do want us to just, and also, I, I agree with my colleague that eighteen months would make more sense to give everyone an opportunity to really, um, see what this could be with you managing it. I don't want you to shortchange yourself and it not be, um, the best that it can be only because you had to rush through services. So I do want us to, uh, fix that for sure in our resolution of, um, it being at least eighteen months. And I want us to just do this, um, with eighteen months first. As opposed to agreeing for six point something million over time. Let's, I want us to see how the eighteen months work, um, with how this is moving forward. And then also, uh, I think another thing, and I have not had a chance to look at this orange packet. So I say this having not looked at the orange packet. But like, i- in the blue packet, we currently have, you know, invite only for, and I'm assuming that this is invite only for like the eighteen months. And then after that, you'll go with other services. Or if maybe that orange packet is saying, again, have not had a chance to look at it. Um, so I, I do know that the organization you represent does amazing work in our community, for our community. I have no doubt that you would be able to properly manage these dollars. Um, I think there was something else that I did want to point out for my colleagues that was at the end of our, uh, resolution specifically for that. And it's just that the be it resolved part that the Greater Flint Health Coalition shall collaborate with the city administration and the Office of Public Health to develop programs that are in alignment with the opioid settlement remediation requirements and provide quarterly spending reports. And I do know that my colleague in the second ward highlighted that for a specific reason. But I want her to know, um, that, uh, that is covered because I do understand her concerns. But I want her to know that, um, in this resolution, we are making sure that we are included in that. Um, and then it also says and provide quarterly spending reports related to the program. I think my colleague in the fifth ward raised a very good point, right? Because those quarterly spending reports are going to come and to whom are they going to come, right? Are we actually going to see this? Because once we say yes, we do want to know what is happening, how it's happening. And we want to keep, be kept abreast of it. Uh, we do have, um, several, um, residents who come and they speak to the opioid crisis and what's happening. And we do have a, a one in particular. And so we do know that there will be a lot of questions with how this works out. I do like the grassroots component of giving, um, others the opportunity that are doing the work in the community who are not a part of larger organizations. Uh, I just have one question with how this could possibly work though. Say this is a smaller organization, right, and you do require, and I noticed it says that they will have to have a fiduciary, right? So small organization, they're doing great work in the community, but they don't have a fiduciary. Is it a conflict of interest for you to serve as their fiduciary?
It is.
Okay.
We could support in pairing them.
Okay. Understood. I just wanted to put that out there ahead of time, just in case someone didn't have one and they were thinking, well, maybe you could do it. So that is a conflict of interest for you to serve as, got that. Um, and then I will yield for now. We have another round. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
In the first round? Go ahead.
Sure, thank you.
All right. So, um, so going back to that part where I, um, where my colleague pointed out who you are supposed to work with, where it says that you are to work with, um, the city administration, Office of Public Health, as she stated. Um, but to hear that, I guess that you all haven't worked with them when you were putting this together is a little concerning. Because you're saying that this is for you to work with them, but it looks like input wasn't given when you guys were putting this together. You just said conversations were had. And so I would think that since this is going to be a collaboration among the two, that you would already be working and talked with her. I'm, I'm surprised I don't see her here today.
I did speak with her before we came into the meeting.
You spoke with her?
Yes, yeah. So she, she used to work for our organization. We have a strong working relationship. Um, and I, and before that, I worked with Faith, um, who was the previous director. We have a long-standing history. We have good partnership. Um, so just because we haven't specifically spoken about this proposal, as you, as you see it in front of you, that was built based on previous conversation, previous, uh, needs that we were in agreement that needed to happen. So.
I understand. Yeah, yeah. But we're here today. And so, so, so the goal is to make sure that we're up to date. And so working with who's in office now, so we can get the answers that we need now. And so that's my concern. So just seeing that this, these are the people that we're supposed to work with, let's go ahead and work with them. Um, and pull this all together. Because you, you can't really bring this to us in good faith when you haven't worked with, just had conversations. Not talking about how conversations, I'm talking about you actually working with the people that's supposed to be making it come fruition. Because you are asking for historic a million dollars. Okay? So it might be a drop in the bucket to some of these palates, but that's a lot here. And we just want to make sure that we are off to the right start. So if this is saying that we must work with them, then it'd be good to see them at the table when all of this is being put together.
Yeah.
All right.
I agree with you. I think it's important that we avoid duplication and have strong roles set in place. So we're all working towards the same goal. And I think that's really the next step, is figuring out what is that role of, of everyone that comes at the table. Um, and that's certainly the next step is once we, really today is, here's a template. Here's a draft of what we've come, of what we put together. Now where do we go from here? And so I appreciate you raising that point. Um, and that's a strong next step that we can take to make sure that we can stand behind that now and not in a future sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, Faith was magnificent and she had a passion. It was personal to her how we used our opioid dollars. As a matter of fact, she protested with her own sign. You know, make sure we cautiously spend our opioid funds. She did. Um, and so you've worked with her.
Yes.
And you've worked with, um, Shebra. Shebra taught me how to use Narcan, told me I won't kill anyone if I use it. And she did a wonderful job. Uh, what is your relationship with Shebra, um, Ms. Ward Pryor? Because she's so knowledgeable. She just did one of my community meetings and she answered every question. And, um, informative, made me feel comfortable. And what is your relationship? She is our public knapper. She's covering so much that she can only do so much.
Absolutely. So, uh, Shebra and I work together as colleagues at the Greater Flint Health Coalition. Um, first as colleagues, uh, so I've, um, I'm also the Director of Mental Health and Substance Use Initiatives in addition to the Senior Program Director for the Mid-Michigan Community Health Access Program. Shebra worked, uh, within the Mid-Michigan Community Health Access Program. Um, and I was her direct supervisor, uh, for just under a year. So we've had a close working relationship, uh, both as colleagues and then, um, in a supervisor, uh, capacity. So I would say we have a strong working relationship, um, and I think we would work together very well.
Okay.
And, uh, Councilwoman Burns, I also had a tremendous working relationship, whether still do. She had an interest in going into the policy side. A lot of folks in public health, as you know, like they do the practitioner side, but they don't always have this much experience in the policy side. So I actually kind of helped work with her on, we were actually working on that when she took the job with you guys, which I'm very happy about. Is a kind of a, that's the F the area that I have the experience in. So I was working.
I'm happy she's here too.
Uh, she's, she's tremendous and we have a great relationship and we work with her and the team well. And one of the things that we'd be also, you know, obviously informally, we're not asking for anything for it, is, you know, use our, use our resources, our program to help supplement and build up the public health department. Uh, uh, Shebra and the team can, can use us to help with our, you know, our team will work, the majority of our folks, we work with the residents. So, I mean, use us as a resource, not just in this, but in other things as well. Because we're all trying to help the people of Flint and, uh, we're stronger together than we are except working in silos. And I think we do a good job of that.
And, and I agree that it is going to take, because we've had opioid, opioid dollars for a while. Opioid dollars were sought underneath, um, former mayor, Dr. Karen Weaver. Um, and it actually came to fruition that we did receive them. Um, because of, you know, she has the insight to say, hey, you know what? As mayor of the city of Flint, I'm going to make sure we put in, uh, for these funds. And we are getting the funds. Um, making sure they're spent wisely is something that is important. I will say, working with Shebra, um, what is the intricate, so, uh, so are you, like, your meetings? Like, how are you, how do you collaborate with her?
So because she left me and came to you, I haven't had the opportunity as much as I used to.
Well, look, I'm glad she came though.
Yeah, and I, I think this is a wonderful space for her and I'm so happy for her to have this robust role with the city of Flint. I think that was an excellent hire by you guys. Um, so I think for Shebra, um, the collaboration with the Health Coalition will be seamless. And I think it'll be a, a kind of a jump back in. Um, I think we've, we're always a great team, uh, not just with me, but other members of my team and at the Health Coalition. Um, so I think once we're ready to really move forward, it's just activation mode again.
Okay, because that's one of the things, making sure that, um, with her, uh, she, she's non-biased. She's like, I'm here to do my job. You know, and then to make sure that we're sewing those two, uh, pieces of fabric with one thread so that we are helping the community together. And making sure that she's giving and letting your organization know from this side, um, this is what we need. Although I know you're here to know and I didn't know that you had your credentials. I didn't know that. I've never met with you before. Um, and so, again, so I, I appreciate as we're asking these questions, you're telling us. But we have a serious problems, a serious problem. And I don't want these funds, we should have, we should have did this when we, we should have been prepared to have this before we got the funds. We should have had a plan in place, a comprehensive opioid plan. Should have been did this. And so I'm not really, I'm not going to drag my feet on this. There's some small tweaks. I'm going to bend your ear. Um, and I appreciate it. I'm going to yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jarrett.
Thank you. Uh, again, uh, thank you all for being here. I, I can and do appreciate what I consider to thought put into the outline with the scope of work. It, it appears that, um, you all have given thought and are giving thought and consideration to providing opportunities for a range of service providers.
Yes, sir.
So you have your, you know, your S U D agencies. You also are looking to work with community-based organizations. And you even have built in for those grassroots organizations to begin to build some capacity. So I, I'm, I'm really appreciating that. And then the bereavement support that, um, to, for many of us and myself included, we may not give thought necessarily to how do we support those that are and have survived. Um, so I really, I really like, uh, what I see here. And to see, you know, some of the, the information, again, uh, my colleague pointed out that in our resolution, it speaks to quarterly reports, uh, on programming, spending and, uh, appropriate outcome metrics. Can you help me to envision what outcomes could look like? Especially given HIPAA consideration. What, what might we expect to get by way of outcomes under, you know, with those, those limitations potentially?
I really appreciate that question as a data nerd, so thank you for opening that. Uh, so outcomes and outputs are very different, right? We can say we distributed a thousand flyers that told people the signs of opioid overdose. That's an output, right? That's, that's something I handed somebody. Outcomes are number of people that we were able to get into treatment. Number of people who had a, uh, a ride to recovery. Number of people who were connected to some sort of support service. Um, and then furthermore, number of people who successfully completed treatment, who are successfully completed a program. With your point to HIPAA and, uh, some other treatment-related, uh, rules and regulations. We won't be providing identified data. It'll all be de-identified. So these will be numbers. These will be outcomes that are, uh, related to successful, uh, entry completion, connection. Um, but we'll certainly track outputs as well. We do want to know, like, how many educational resources were distributed, how many events were held, right? So we're going to be checking the, that in a, in a wide array of ways. Also looking at success stories. So actual qualitative data, having people share, because the city of Flint invested in this organization, I was able to access this. And this changed my life in that way. We want to look at that data as well because we know that has a greater impact in some, in some cases than the number, right? It's one thing for someone to be a number, but a story can be that deciding factor between it's a no for me and a yes, we're going to sustain your program because we see that it works.
Okay. Like I say, I'm, I'm liking what I'm seeing and, um, the thought that has been invested on your side. I, I do feel for, for me and a vote tonight, I'm probably gonna, I'm gonna need more time before the yes tonight. Um, but I, I'm, I'm feeling, I'm liking the direction that, that this seeming partnership, uh, could, could be going in. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I yield.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll take a few minutes. I'll take a few minutes. You and I had a long conversation on the phone, ranging in multiple topics. As I've been quite vocal with, I've had family members addicted to opioids in recovery from over 30 years to just over a year, like a month over a year. And a one-year doesn't do much to look for a positive sustaining outcome for the addicted. I do like the fact that you didn't neglect the children. But it's not just those who have lost parents. It's those who have ended up in foster care, even though they've been reunited. Family members going through, you know, they, they lost their children, you know, all of them. One was born addicted. And to me, that recovery is so difficult for the children. Anyway, they're all impacted by it. Especially those who are on the east side. I get calls about children living with their addicted parents in a garage. And I hear that CPS goes out and there's no children, no child there. How can we save that child? That's, that, that gets me. And so, the children are a big thing. And I'm also not a big fan of changing one addiction to another. Methadone is not my favorite thing. It helps, but then you've got to get off of that too. And so, it's, it's not, that's my personal feelings. I've had long discussions with other providers, not even in this county, about these issues and my feelings. And they've shared their feedback. They're not all that confident, but it does work in some cases. So, I'm not going to, just because I don't like it, doesn't mean it doesn't work. I don't know that a one-year is long enough to get enough data to continue a program. Eighteen months, I think, is a minimum. And I know that some people will push back on that. So, that's all under negotiation type thing. I know that in my sister's case, it took nine months before she was out of an inpatient treatment out into the world. And this was after six months in jail. So, that's why I don't know that a one-year program is the best use for outcomes, to see where our outcomes are going to be. So, that's where I'm at right now. And like, like Mr. Jarrett, I can't say yes today, but we'll definitely continue talking about it. And so, we'll go into the second round.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So, it seems that there are some tweaks, and we're literally just talking about the blue packet that should be made, because I'm not seeing where it necessarily says one year. I think you all said one year. Does it say any or one year specifically? Because I was trying to find that specific language in here. Either way, if we could maybe, and I know a couple of us are going to have conversations and ask more questions. I know it doesn't specifically say one year in there at all. I was looking for that. So, I know that that leaves us some room. I was reading our resolution. Our resolution doesn't give a timeline either. So, if maybe we could send this to Special Affairs instead of attempting to send this to council tonight, only because again, there are questions, we still need to read over this more. And so, I think this gives us an opportunity between now and Monday to read over this, ask more questions. Also, for you all to give the administration and our attorneys an opportunity to really go over this and look. And then give us an opportunity to decide if on Monday, if there are some specific changes we need to change our resolution to a point one, or if we just scrap this resolution and get a whole new one. So, I make a motion that we send this to Special Affairs.
There's a motion on the floor to send to Special Affairs. Is there support? It's been moved improperly seconded to send to Special Affairs by this councilwoman in the second ward. Roll call, please.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Mr. L Alamin is not in. You have six yes, one no.
The vote is six yes, one no. That will go to Special Affairs on Monday.
Madam Chair. Do you, can we make a request for them to return for Special Affairs?
Just did. Thank you very much.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think one thing I want to make sure we make clear to, you know, this is just a proposal. There still has to be a contract signed. So, to Dr. Lewis's point about working with the Public Health Department, especially the Director, that all would have to be worked out. This is just, when we were asked to come forward with a proposal for a million dollars, this is what we had. So, we would work the details out, if, you know, mentioning about, you know, quarterly reports, if there's an interest in having us come back on a basis, you know, whatever that would need to. I was a councilperson. I know sometimes even, you know, sometimes you send information over. Sometimes it gets brought up, sometimes it doesn't. But if you want, and sometimes it's also better to have questions asked. How is this working? We've heard this. Maybe sometimes it's misinformation. Sometimes there's community residents who weren't able to get ahold of us, and they got ahold of you. They can then be brought over to us to make sure that they're getting the program. There's, this is just the beginning conversation. It's all good questions, all important things. The proposal was shared with the administration. Just whether it was shared with the attorney or not, I can't speak to. But it was shared with the administration contact person who was reaching out to us about the million. But of course, we'd have a contract signed too. So, that would be worked out again at another point in time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next resolution is 250335. Application and proposed budget, senior village funding, Genesee County McKinley Center.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to leave this here and this in finance.
Okay, the most, there's a motion on the floor from the councilwoman in the seventh ward to keep this in finance. Is there a second? It's been seconded by the councilwoman in the second ward. This is the vote to keep in finance.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Mr. L Alamin is absent. Six yes, one no.
The vote is six yes, one no. That will be kept in finance and be on our next agenda. Our final separation is 250350. Flock group, additional public safety surveillance cameras, burn discretionary grant funds, Flint Police Department, two-year agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion that we send 250350 dash T to council.
There's a motion on the floor by the councilwoman in the fifth ward, supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward to keep, to send this to council. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Is there anyone? I see. Where is he? Okay, I see him. Okay. Boo. How are you?
Come on up.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening. Can you tell us a little bit about this? And particularly too, I wanted to find out as far as transparency. I see you guys are also asking for another 31. You're going to put up another 31 cameras? I wanted to find out where. And I know you may not tell us, be able to tell us where, but can you give us an idea? Because I know some areas whereas we probably do need more cameras. I've been pushing for cameras throughout this city. So, just give us more information on this.
I will answer this if you will allow in this way. We've heard the concerns. Saying exactly where would defeat the purpose of having this network. But we have heard the concerns. And I can say that those concerns will be addressed with this expansion project.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure that we have what we need in those areas that we really need the, the cameras.
Yes.
And, you know, we got, we got some areas that we have the, the high crime, you know, high crime areas. And so, I just want to make sure that more cameras are being put in those areas.
Yes, yes.
Because to, to get 31 more cameras and not put them in the areas that's, that's really needed is really defeating the purpose. So, okay, I'll yield. I might have another question coming up in the second round.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. So, my background is cameras. And I know people don't like cameras. They don't like them. And I used to, when living in Chicago part-time, my tickets with the cameras beat me home always. So, with the cameras, this one is a grant for 160,000?
Correct.
So, this is not costing the city?
Correct.
And then you're taking, so 160,500. And then you're getting from your professional services out of your budget, the other 39,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, how beneficial are cameras?
Cameras are extremely beneficial. I will say that flock cameras have been responsible in aiding in bringing good evidence and supportive facts as we ship cases over for prosecution and moving them through judicial process. These cameras have provided us with great evidence to assist us in these cases that we're pursuing. So, they're extremely important.
So, and, and I know people may not like it's Big Brother watching. We can't avoid that now. I mean, we've been doing, and I literally for over 25 years have been installing cameras. It's a long time. And we look at people with the Ring cameras. Ring cameras are, I mean, it's the first thing that when you guys have a case, you know, if you go and ask them there, who's got, look, who's got a Ring doorbell? Because that footage is there.
Correct.
I know we may not like Big Brother's watching, but it's here. Getting on and off of the expressways, getting on and off of your major thoroughways. They have cameras. And it's, it's here. And it's not just the US, it's other countries also. And so, I have always been for cameras. I understand people want their privacy. But if you're out in the public, I mean, that's, that's different. And as we have issues hiring at the police department, we, we can't have, at the height, I think Flint had 400 officers. 400. We don't have maybe just over 100 now. And so, what we have to do is do things that are, that are different. And we're talking about how do we police and how do we handle crime. I know, and I've had many conversations with, no, you won't let us know where they are, but we know where they are. I mean, you have never granted us the list, but you can't miss them, you know? And you, you just can't. And they are helpful with getting crimes and, and helping. I know people don't want their, their license plates. I believe in the state of Michigan, you cannot, although it may capture, it's nothing, you can't prosecute with your license plate. Is that correct?
That is correct. We, in Michigan, we cannot write a ticket based on an infraction. These cameras are not monitoring your speed or checking to see if you disobeyed a stop sign or traffic light. That's not the type of cameras these are.
In Illinois, they are.
Correct.
Here, here they aren't. Because I've got many a tickets in Illinois. That's why I got the EZ Pass. So, I know people and I understand people's concern, but there's many more people. I come from a background of security cameras, security alarms. That's what I, my, part of my background. And I am for the camera. It's not costing us adding to it because we can, we're able to track. We have an intel center. We also ask that our businesses have the green light program where the, the cameras are directly go to your feed with the green light on top of them. And that's been in about what, 10 years?
Yes.
About 10 years. And it shows you, you've been able to solve crimes. I mean, literally what used to be Club Sunoco, now it's Sunoco Service Station. Well, now Marathon, I take that back. Now Marathon, we're able to see what was going on because the cameras with the action plan able to see, get them reconnected in 21 to see what was going on. And we don't have the problems like we used to have. And then you also have the Ring cameras. So, I am going to support this. I come from a camera background. I have cameras on my house. So, if you don't want to do anything that's criminal, then you got to be careful. It's just cameras are everywhere. It's just technology. And so, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
How many cameras do we have currently operating?
61. 62, I'm sorry.
62?
62, yes. 62.
62. And I, I just heard you to speak that they are not necessarily, or they don't, aren't used for, for traffic in that type of surveillance. Is that?
We are not issuing tickets based on what the cameras capture. That's not allowable in the state of Michigan.
Okay. And I, I heard you speak to the fact that these, the 62 that we have have aided in the prosecution of, of some of the cases?
Correct.
Okay. What? I, I guess I'm, and I don't really know how to ask the question because I don't know if you would be able to, to really give an answer as to, to try to quantify the impact in a way. But, okay. So, currently there being, the cameras that we have are being used for what type of surveillance?
Well, the cameras that, that are deployed throughout the city currently have assisted in cases of homicides, missing persons, the recover of abducted individuals, drug cases. So, they have been instrumental in helping provide great evidence in those cases. And that's how we're using them.
The, the cameras that you'll be looking to add, will they provide additional technology to broaden the, the assistance? Is it?
Correct. The 31 cameras that we are asking to implement and add to the system will only broaden our coverage area.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't phrase that right. Do they come with new technology that's beyond what we have that will give us a, a capability that the other cameras did?
These, the, the additional cameras will be able to upload any additional or new technology that flock system offers. So, right now, when we're bringing them online, they will have the same capabilities as, as the other cameras that we are, we have deployed. But this, this technology is emerging on a daily basis. It's getting better. It's getting faster. So, those cameras would automatically be able to, to accept that upload of any new technology that's added to the system.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Anyone else? I'm, in the first round, I'm going to take some time. So, you haven't been in any discussions, I don't think, when I've had them with the fire chief or the police chief, where I have begged for more cameras in the fourth ward to stop. where I have begged for more cameras in the fourth ward to stop, find some of these arsonists, find people who are squatting in these houses who are doing the drug deals. And so I applaud this. But I also want people to know that businesses' cameras can be sent, they can tie direct, you guys can tie it directly into those businesses' cameras, no cost to either party.
That's correct.
And so if you are a business owner and are considering upgrading your camera system, or maybe you have cameras, check with the police department and your service provider to see if they can connect too. Because I know of at least one business in the fourth ward that you monitor their cameras all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have solved crimes.
We have.
I've heard about those. So I, I, I want to, that is probably the cheapest way. If you're already going to have cameras, to let the police department monitor those as well. So that was my comment, and I'm in favor of this. Any discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? Any discussion in the second round? Hearing none, this is a vote to send Resolution two-five-zero-three-five-zero to council.
Ms. Priestley?
Did I say the number wrong?
No, I'm doing the roll call. Ms. Priestley?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no?
The vote is seven yes, zero no. That will be sent to council.
Thank you.
It's now time for our discussion item, two-five-zero-three-five-seven. The discussion item is requested by Council President Lewis to discuss the city's American Rescue Plan at ARPA funds. Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you. So through you, Madam Chair, could we please have Mr. Phil come to the front?
Mr. Moore, do you want Seamus to?
Um, sure.
Seamus? Mr. Bannon?
They're trying to figure out how long the discussion is.
Oh. Twenty minutes. Twenty-minute discussion.
Okay, hi, Mr. Moore. A couple of quick questions about ARPA. So seeing that we had a lot of organizations apply for funding across all categories and many have not received word if they are to receive this funding. So what are the plans to correspond with these organizations?
I'm not sure I'm the right person to answer that question. We do have a, we have been keeping track of who's spending, because we do have to spend the money by twenty-twenty-six. And so we've been keeping track of who's been spending the money and who has not. The agencies or groups that have not been spending the money, we've been meeting with them to make sure, to help them, you know, overcome the hurdles, make sure that they're doing what's needed to spend the money. But I think most of them have done, have done a, have done a great job. There are a couple that we're, we're still working with. But I'm not the one that has been, I haven't participated in those meetings, so I can't really answer a lot of the detailed questions that you might have.
Okay, well, I appreciate what you gave because one of my major concerns is we had a, a whole bunch of organizations and they applied for community funding. We set aside almost, I'll say, a little over eighteen million. I know it was like between twen- eighteen, twenty million for community funding. And we have not went through all of those requests. And so by us not going through all the requests to tell people yes or no, so my question is, so where are we in that process? In terms of letting the people that are not going to get money, letting them know that they're not going to receive money?
I'm not the person to ask that. I do know that the money that was not obligated, we moved it to the general fund, which bought us some time. We don't, the funds that were moved to the, the general fund, we have more time. We don't have to spend those by twenty-twenty-six because they are, in the eyes of the federal government, that has been obligated. We have, we have met their requirements for that. The, the items that we have had resolutions before we made the, the transfer, those we have to make sure that they get spent by twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. So, so I, I hear you mentioned when we transferred the money to the general fund, that was so we won't lose it. Because at that, at the period of time, we were at a position where either we transferred it over to the general fund or it totally goes back to the federal government.
Right.
Right, right, right. And so seeing that, it's important to look at, we, under the circumstances of, we must keep the money in the ARPA category underneath general funds. That's correct, right?
The, the general fund, we have more flexibility.
Okay, so general fund have more flexibility. However, in the resolution that this council brought forth, it says that in order to spend this money, that this body must sign off on it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we were still there. All right, and so I would like to see, I would like to have, have a list brought up. I know with the councilwoman in the fourth ward finance chair, she said that she gave us packets and enlisted everyone that applied, what they applied for and et cetera. I want to make sure that everyone that are, that's going to get funds, that they have been told that they're going to get funds. Those people that are not going to receive funds, that they're, that they're told. Because they've been waiting for several years to find out if they're going to receive funds. And I also see, I hear that we have other organizations that are waiting to receive funds, that been allocated funds, but the funds have not been transferred yet.
I'm not, I can talk to the people that do that, but yes, we can get you that information.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I have one more question. Okay. And so, and so my other question is regarding the thirty thousand dollar ward, war funds, right?
Yes.
Because it was in this past budget when we just passed the twenty-twenty-four budget?
I, I think the city council originally adopted that in twenty-twenty-two, but they actually spent the money in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, so I'm not sure what you're talking about, but what I'm talking about is, is the budget. Go ahead, Seamus. I'm through you, Madam Chair. So I, I, I'll be real clear what I'm talking about. So, so when we passed the budget, the new budget, we passed twenty-twenty-four budget, it, it had that we had ward money allocated in the budget again. And so this would give every single council member an additional thirty thousand dollars to spend in their ward. And so I just want to follow up on that to see what we need to do to make that kind of fruition since it was already passed in the budget.
So looking at, I did some research on this and I found the original resolution, which spoke to the ward priorities of thirty thousand dollars each, totaling two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. That resolution is Resolution number two-two-zero-four-six-four. That's two-two-zero-four-six-four. That was approved on October twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two. So that was approved as part of the overall ARPA spending allocation plan. It took a couple of years until council got to a point of spending that. My understanding was that's a one-time, a lot amount of money to each council ward member to use for their wards, a one-time investment.
Okay, so definitely understand that it may say one time. So when we passed that budget, this twenty-four budget, and it had that spending in there, does that mean that every single council person can get an additional thirty thousand dollars to support their ward from these ARPA funds?
One of the issues we, we have to be concerned about with the money that was transferred to the general fund is that we can't spend the money twice. And so even though the, the budget says that so much has been appropriated, we're not going to get additional ARPA dollars. So we have to make sure that we don't double spend it because we don't have the funds to do that. In relation to your question, my conversations with the mayor, he said he understood that the council was interested in having some ward priorities. And he told me to find a way to allocate an additional ten thousand dollars to, for each council person.
So let me ask you this, so who, who puts the, the cap on ten? So, so he's going to dictate how much money that we get for our ward priority? Is, is this at his pleasure?
Pardon?
I said, is our ward priority money at his pleasure? Because you, because you said, you said, hold on, hold on, Mr. Moore, wait. You just said that the mayor said that, that he wanted, I guess, have a discussion with us about ward priority money and he will give us ten thousand dollars. He don't have any money to give us. So that's my question. So the authority that he's giving us something is a little problematic here. So I'll let you continue.
Okay. My wording may not be as precise as it should be, but I, I, I think the intent is that he wants to make sure that the, the city council can spend some money for their wards, but he also had to recognize that we can't double spend the money. We can't spend it twice, that would cause a problem.
I definitely understand that. And hearing that, we have not spent a lot of the money because a lot of people haven't got paid. So I think now is the time for us to take a deep dive into where these ARPA money, where they have went. So we can make sure that they hit its intended target. So if we're not going to give organizations money, we can give them note saying that we're not giving you money, we do apologize, and, and we can move forward. So we know how much that we have to spend because again, this money, this is, these historic funds are sent here to help uplift our municipality. And I know all of us have different ward priorities that need to be addressed, every single one of us. And so this is not his money to dictate that he's going to give us ten thousand dollars. So I would like to find out, let me ask you, so how much, so how much money is left in the ARPA fund?
So, so just, just to, just to clarify, it's not that anyone's dictating anything here. What we're trying to say is that we can't automatically trigger the previous allocation again and duplicate that. What can happen is the administration can put another proposal that's not automatically because of the previous budget, can put another lot of money together. Yes, that's not a problem. That's what we're trying to say. It's not that somebody's graciously giving you anything, but that's not theirs. It's that we just can't automatically trigger it based on that understanding or misunderstanding of it being a duplicate effort. Because if we would, then where would we stop? Do we duplicate all allocated money in the budget for all ARPA projects, not just award priorities? So you, you understand it would become a massive undertaking, but what we're trying to say is that these, these dollars have gone a long way. We're, we're just in the process of developing a brand-new ARPA newsletter. I have one for each one of you guys before it goes out to the mail, so you can see exactly where we're going. We've supported job training, we've supported RX kids, we've supported in-home plumbing, roof repair programs, sidewalk tree removal, and private tree removal programs. So we have been tracking these with Ernst &amp; Young, our compliance firm. Every cent, every dollar is tracked, is monitored, not just internally, but by the compliance firm who is hired to make sure that we are staying on top of things and on board with things. So we have an internal one that we track. To the, to your point on people saying that, entities saying that they were supposed to get money, that haven't got money yet. If you can give me a list of those, I can follow up on those because I have a list of everyone that's been, it resoluted to get some funding. We're tracking it. If they're not spending, they're red flag. If they're sort of spending, they're orange flag. If they're spending, well, they're green flag. Those red flag ones are the ones that we're trying to encourage to move forward. The only ones that may have not received money initially, and it might take some time, we've come across this, is that some of them, they don't have their five-oh-one-C-three status with the state set. So there's a few compliance pieces that they have to overcome in order to sign the contract. That slows things down a bit, but I would definitely appreciate if you could send me a list of entities that you know that have said that they're supposed to get, there's a resolution to say they're getting money and they haven't received anything. If you can send that to me, I will for sure look, look over that tomorrow.
Yeah, because I know I had organizations reach out to me and they were asking, are we going to receive any ARPA funding? Are we up for consideration? And when I was trying to compel this body to do it category by category, so we won't be all over the place, they declined. And so now we're all over the place. And so the point is to make sure that for youth wellness, we go through this entire youth wellness list. We decide if we're going, who we're going to give money to. And those that are not going to get money, send them a letter so we can move on. It feel like that, that we're, we're leaving ends open and we need to tie those up so we can move forward.
So youth wellness is one of the categories I can look at with you, okay?
Yeah, I believe youth wellness is one of them.
Okay, if you just send me the list of those, I will follow up and make sure that we're, we're moving forward on those.
Okay, thank you. And I'll give the rest of the time if any colleagues have anything to add to that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just have two quick things. And, Mr. Moore, the first thing is not something that you can answer. Seamus, maybe you could possibly answer. I know that the person who is ensuring that the organizations that are currently spending their ARPA money, trying to keep in line with their proposals, right now they're having a positive experience or they've had a positive experience with getting their payments on time. I know that there was an employee, I think there was an employee that was dedicated to taking care of this, someone specifically. It's my understanding that employee, that how they're getting their money may now change because that employee can no longer do the overtime on Saturday that's necessary for him to ensure that they are getting that done correctly?
Yes, so there is two, there's two individuals that are, per council resolution for staffing, approved positions on ARPA. And it's many contract coordinators, making sure the contractors, contracts are moving forward, yes. They're still working, everything's moving well. When we identified the red flags, we sent out letters, we've gone out to them. By, by we, I mean those individuals that are working have gone to some of the entities to help them get in order, get everything in line so that they can move forward and receive payments.
So, but that is in addition to the job they do all day anyway, correct? So that's ARPA in addition to their normal city functions, correct?
No, that is their job.
Their sole, their sole job is to do the ARPA, okay?
They're the ARPA contract coordinator, yeah.
To be the ARPA contract coordinator. So with this change in that person's time, is that going to affect the efficiency that they have been seeing?
I, I don't thi- I don't believe so. I don't believe so. There may have been a need for that at the time when we were having a bit more red flags, but we've moved a lot of those into the orange flag and even better, the orange flag into the green flag. So there's enough time in the forty-hour week to be able to do the work that needs to be done and as efficiently as it is now.
All right, and if we see that that efficiency starts to change, how far out are we going to let that go? Because again, they do have a spend-down time limit on these dollars, so.
Right.
And then also, we have a lot of organizations who cannot afford to shoulder, trying to figure out how to take care of that expense if our, if we start having that bag up.
Well.
So that might halt some work.
Sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
All of the, all of the ones we're talking about were resoluted prior to January first, twenty-twenty-four. Anything that was approved and ARPA-related up to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, let me speak right, December thirty-first, twenty-two, that's got the hard deadline of end of twenty-six to spend. Anything from January first, twenty-twenty-four, that's been awarded as ARPA, as far as the feds are concerned, that doesn't have a December thirty-first, twenty-six deadline. We're still trying to operate internally and encourage them to spend between that time, but we're not out of, they're not going to be out of compliant as far as the federal government is concerned if they don't spend that down by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. The ones I'm highlighting, the orange and red and green flags are the ones that were on top of, that were approved prior to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, so my next question, you said Resolution two-two-four-six-four?
I believe so, that was the, I think that's the number I have, yeah.
Yes, that is.
That's the right one, yeah. Two-two-zero-four-six-four, correct?
You said two-two-zero-four-six-four. And can you tell me again what that resolution says, why you alluded to that?
That, because that spoke about the ward priorities amongst the bigger plan for ARPA spending. That was the one that was approved by council.
Madam, Ms. Machette, that is the.
We paused in my time?
Sure. Pause the time, please. That is the resolution that approved, where we approved, approved the spending plan, the council's spending plan for ARPA. And it included the And it included the um $270,000 for ward.
All right, so then real quick, so you're saying that's one that it included that $30,000 in there, right?
Correct.
You're saying and and that he said that was in 2022.
That was that was the budget, quote unquote.
That was so that was budgeted in 2022?
Yes.
So what you're saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, then you're saying that the new budget that we adopted, which was the one from last year that included an ARPA $30,000, are you saying that that is null and void because of this 2022? I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying is that we only budgeted in the plan $30,000 per ward. We didn't allocate more than $30,000.
I under that I I understand that piece, but it seems we're bumping up against why it's valid, why it's not valid. Is it not valid because it was passed in 2022? Or is it not va I I'm, do you understand what I'm saying? Because she the re she's saying, excuse me, Councilwoman Lewis is saying that we adopted a budget last year, right? Oh my, we adopted last year's budget and that budget included the ARPA for $30,000. You know, you both are saying that that was adopted in 2022 and only executed last year, so help me understand what's happening.
As the money was allocated from the ARPA dollars and when it was put into the general fund, it was put into the general fund budget. But it was not supposed to be duplicated money. It's very confusing and I'm not gonna lie about that because we allocated it. I don't, they put when the money went to the general fund, you put the $30,000 in those ward account numbers.
Which budget was the $30,000 in? Was it 2022 and it just now got allocated or was it the budget before that?
The 2022 resolution was the approval of the ARPA plan and those were never put into the budget per se.
Per se.
Until until they were allocated. We had we had multiple, well, please remember, in the meantime, we had multiple CFOs.
I understand.
And how 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 Phil would do it is not how Mr. Wood, Rob Woodigan would have done it. It's very confusing, I understand that, and that's why I kept track of it on my own.
So we're saying that it was from a budget in 2022, the $30,000 was technically allocated in 2022. Therefore, when we adopted this budget, that $30,000 doesn't count again because it was already supposed to be allocated in 2022?
Thirty thousand dollars for a three-year period. Please note that it's over a three-year period. We could have spent it over three years. Like Dr. Lewis, I believe spent it.
I I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out when it was adopted. But are we saying that it's considered adopted in 2022?
The plan was adopted in 2022.
That specific budget item then was adopted in 2022, therefore, when you readopted the budget, I mean, excuse me, so there therefore, when we decided to adopt last year's budget, that doesn't count because it was adopted in 2022 already? Is that what you're saying?
That is what I'm saying.
Okay. I yield.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is, we're all getting along here. So I agree with with Councilwoman Lewis that I think that when we talk about ward priorities, that it should not be the mayor giving us giving us $10,000, that's not his choice. We are co-equal branches and we need to understand that. Um, secondly, because thus it was our choice and everyone, we voted on each person's um funds to spend and in how they chose, and I I I I feel people did a good job, the entire council on spending theirs. I will say that. So um St. Mark Missionary Baptist Church, Sheamus, Mr. Moore, um that contract has been sitting on, um I was told, the mayor's desk since we voted on it in August. Um, we are now facing SNAP benefits and um to be cut off and we have a community that is, they need to be fed. They're hungry. And so my thing is, why is this being held up? A truck was sent after um food bank cannot operate if we don't pay them. No, I mean, and that is a reasonable expectation that they deserve to be paid if they're sending trucks out. We should not even be having this argument or this 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 issue for something to sit on the mayor's desk for two months is ridiculous. They sent a truck this morning, gave zero notice to the church, which the the alarm system alerted, but they told them prior that they didn't have the funds. The the food bank deserves to be paid in a timely manner, especially when it comes to the residents and our community who need this assistance. That should never be negotiable. It should not. And I and and.
Can I can I respond to it? Can you call me?
Hold on, because I, yep, hold just a sec. Um, I wanna put another.
I'd like to respond.
Um, because we're gonna run out of time. Another 15 minutes on.
There's a motion on the floor to add 15 minutes to this discussion item. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly seconded. This is the vote to add 15 minutes onto the discussion.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, zero no.
The vote is seven yes, zero no. Go ahead and make that 16 minutes.
Thank you. And and Sheamus, you may not even have to respond.
No, I I I looked, I looked, no, I got you. I looked into this, I looked into this for you. So um unfortunately, I'm not sure where you're getting your information, but that specific.
Well, I'm gonna tell you where I got it from. The east, the food bank.
Okay, that's.
So I'm and and I wanna be very clear.
Okay.
Because I read the email.
Okay, that specific resolution or that specific contract never got to the mayor's desk till last week, till Friday, okay?
So it took two months, but then City Hall to make it to his desk?
Can I, I'm about to, I'm about to explain to you. Um, like I said, these contracts aren't an overnight thing. They take a little bit of time because people make to shit need to make sure that they're compliant, there's compliance pieces involved. There's also multiple layers of um signatures, not just one signature. And unfortunately, over the last few weeks, we've had some administrative.
A lot of people quitting.
Deceased, no, no, deceased, people passed. People's family members passed and may not have been available to sign these to go to the next level. I don't wanna go into details. I think you know what I'm talking about.
That would be Mr. Edwards, but I don't think that and and Sheamus, I'm gonna be very clear, when it's certain things, we, food should not be held up.
No, I I'm 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 not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying.
And Mr. Edwards did have two unfortunate passing.
I'm 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 just explaining, I'm explaining to you what happened. It's not, it didn't get to that level till and and I, as soon as it went up, found out where it was, we're getting it moving. So.
So whatever you can do to please push that.
Hundred hundred percent.
Yeah, because there are people and it's this, it's our, in our community, it's the looming, the Republican, the Democrats are not, they are different, they're they're apart. And as long as it stays, people are scared that they won't be able to feed their families. And here it is, we have access, food access, ARPA funds, and we should expeditiously make sure. And food is high. It's high and it's not cheap, you know? And so when we're doing this, we need to be doing our parts and take the feelings out of. And I do wanna go back to um the giving council another amount for our ward. I agree, we should have more to spend in our wards because we're in our wards to see how we want to spend it, uh where it's the most effective, because that's what we do is deal with the associations, the residents, and how to spend to where we make it more effective. So for example, my ward, I gave 15 or it was 14,000. I gave that to Bethel, their help center, to make sure they continue to function. I also gave the other park to Mott Park, uh I call it the Go and Green Garage, because we doing everything, electric mowers, electric blowers, so that people can maintain they their yards, so it doesn't cause a burden on the blight department because they can't afford lawn equipment. And that was what I did. When we look at innovative, what we can do, it should not just be the funds that the mayor's spending for his campaign. And it's going out to his his preferred people. It's going out to them. And it's, he spent a lot, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we're stuck with $30,000 a mayor and he's you, if I give them, that's not his choice. We should be working, you know, we're seeing things. He asked us to come tell him our ward priorities. He need to come tell us what his priorities in front of his council. Not just you, because you may work with him, but you're not, no disrespect, you're not the mayor. And for us to do that, and I and I know despite what we may believe, this is how, I'm agreeing with Dr. Lewis. I I am.
Yeah. I I just.
I am.
Just to clarify, it's it it's, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. It's the idea that because it was passed one year to another, it automatically triggers. That's what we're saying is is not what happened.
So this was the thing in 2022, I don't know if you were here or not.
I was, yeah.
Okay, I don't know, you weren't coming up here, so you must have been in another department when you hired him.
I think so.
Yeah.
I've been here four, over four years.
Yeah, so I don't think you weren't with administr, you weren't, you never came up before at that point. So when we have that fund, 2022, we passed it, it was for 30,000. I don't remember seeing that, that it was over three years. We were told we had a dead, we were told then that it had to be passed by, it had to be allocated by that time.
Obligated, yeah, yeah.
Right, but then it was voted and it went into the general fund. And if people see some things, because things are changing in our wards, that we should be able to have a opportunity to do great things besides the mayor and his million press, he could at press conferences, he's the press conference king, I'm gonna give it to him. But we would should be able to have things till we can see it benefits our community. Only benefit from that money right now is Mayor Sheldon Neely giving it out and giving it to the churches. And some of these churches right now are not even getting the funds. I mean, have they, whatever happened to the, oh God, what was the the Kennedy cleaners? They were gonna shovel snow, they were gonna mow grass and do all of that. Did they ever mow any grasses?
I'm sorry, I have no idea.
Yeah, okay, I'm just asking.
Well, I I do know, I do know, um just to get back to to the administration, my understanding and being part of it, does care about what council people have to say about their priorities. That's why you send, get those invites to come in and discuss.
We give them to him and we give them to him and then he makes them his. That's what happens.
Like, as I was saying.
I'm just telling you.
Okay, as I was saying, is that invited to to see what you need done, see what priorities that you have, it it's important because you guys are the ones that are there every day, that you know what's going on and know what your ward needs. Hence, you get those invites. I know not everybody comes. To the other point is.
Well, that's because we get called um treasonous acts and treasonous and obstructionist. I mean, that's why.
As as I've said, okay, um, yeah, so I think I think everyone's understanding here, there is this gap, there is a need.
There is a need.
And nobody, nobody is saying here before you that one person is saying yes or no to this. That's not what we're saying. And I know Phil said he needed, he corrected himself on that, the way it came out. Let let's see if we can do that, move forward, have those meetings, have those conversations, see what those priorities are, because yeah, there is a need.
We need to move a lot quicker. And I'm agreeing again with Councilmember Lewis, that when these people have these, is the money is given to the organizations, they've passed the hurdles, why are we still saying once they went through the vetting process, we're revetting them and not able to get them out?
We're not, I respectfully, we're not revetting them.
Not revetting?
They 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 get through the resolution, then they have to, once the resolution, that's not the the ultimate stop. That's the first part, there has to be a contract. But because there's, there is compliance, there is federal dollars involved, that takes a minute, so.
But the vetting should have been done, that's part of the vetting, to being in compliance. The vetting should be if if you're in compliance.
Right.
Because how, so we're, I mean.
So so for so for instance, we find out that one of the entities wasn't even registered as a 501(c)(3) with the state of Michigan.
Then it should, that's the vetting process, it shouldn't have went forward then.
They 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 respectfully, a lot of those came through council to us. There were, they were, came through a council process of youth wellness, there was youth wellness categories, there was these categories at the beginning of the inception of this that applied for funding. And I didn't sit down and look over all of these, but when we get a resolution that passes and approves money, I'm.
I don't know if we can do requests for information or anything right now. I I I need to correct something.
Yeah, because you steaming over there.
Go ahead.
Um, so they didn't necessarily come from council, the resolutions. Councilwoman Burns, are you aware that they didn't come necessarily come through council? There was a suggested list of people and then once council got that list of people, um there were suggestions followed and then those resolutions were made by the administration and then sent to the council, so the administration would have had an opportunity to vet that.
Thank you, and I am aware of that and you are correct. Just so that we're clear and all, you know, we're putting out good information. Thank you. So I'm on a, I'm on a yield the floor to my colleagues.
Is there anyone else who'd like to have the floor?
Um, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Since we still have time. I do wanna go back to, because I, again, I wanna be clear. Uh, I am reading this uh resolution adopting the ARPA allocation plan. I do see October 24th, 2022 on here. And so according to what my understanding is from our finance chair, because technically that was adopted, the 30,000 was adopted in 2022, it does not count in the budget that we adopted again from last year. I'm I'm hearing you correctly.
Basically, yeah.
And so, but what I'm hearing from my colleagues now, um, Sheamus, uh we are, right, one, two things that absolutely need to happen quickly, uh is for sure, because November 1st is upon us and there will be a lot of people without benefits. And so there will be shelters as well as um different organizations, all of the churches and some of the pantries. I'm sure they will be hit pretty hard with residents needing to come and get uh some food. So I'm not sure if now we're looking at that food access category again and how that works. I'm not sure how much money is left in food access for us to do that. Um, I'm not sure if we look at, hm? Do you know how much is left in food access or Councilwoman Priestley, anyone?
Off the top of my head, no, I refer to.
Okay, we can, we can work that out, but we need to work that out way before November 1st.
I have an update.
Like way before.
Before what?
Before, before Monday, hopefully.
Okay.
We need, because that, I think that's something that should go in special affairs. Um, and then my second thing, and I, when I say, what I'm saying needs to go in special affairs is if there are any food access dollars that we could possibly allocate. So that's something we would have to have an answer to before Monday so that there could be a resolution for by Monday. I see your face. I understand, but what I'm saying to you is, um, when people have nowhere to eat, no way to get anything to eat, more than just your economy suffers. You wanna talk about a crime rate, you will see a crime rate when people have to feed their kids. I'm just saying, so it's something we might wanna figure out fast.
Phil call me tomorrow.
Okay, and then my second thing, it it sounds like there is a strong desire for more money to be allocated to council for wards, for ward-specific things. And so. Where do we go with that? We understand. I mean, I I understand that neither of you have the ability to answer that question on behalf of the mayor. So I'm I'm being completely understanding that I'm asking you a question that is more so something that you would have to say back to the mayor. I heard $10,000 is is where we're starting this. You don't have to speak. I understand. So we we, we're here, we're hearing $10,000 on the table right now of ward priorities. Okay.
I didn't say that, so.
I know you didn't. I'm just, I don't know where that, I thought somebody said it.
I didn't say that.
Oh, you did, you said it, okay. Oh, you did, you said it, okay, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't clear on who said it, but it's fine, we don't, we don't have to have the, the discussion on it. But that, uh, food access resolution, I think that that is something that we do need to.
So, so.
Councilwoman Priestley.
To, to the, um, that, okay. That's a heavy lift in a couple of days, I understand the timing.
Especially since the, the report is due this week or Monday for the federal.
Very much working on the quarterly report, which is another thing that.
So, if there's a report, that means that that amount is in the report already, so y'all got it?
I.
We have about two more days of work.
Two more days to finish the, the report, it's a seventy-two page document, so it's, it's, it's a lot.
So, but somewhere in that document, those numbers exist.
Yes, 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 and we can pull them out, but to the resol-, what would the resolution say? Would it identify entities, and we need to find those entities, so.
I think that.
We'd have to be a bit creative in how you write the, if, the resolution, if.
Understand completely, I think for now, we are looking at the food bank for sure, because we know that there are multiple entities that already have accounts at the food bank. So, if it's something that just needs to rest at the food bank as a preliminary thing, and then we work out the rest, that's fine too. But that might help get you some direction? I think Dr. Lewis.
Dr. Lewis wants time.
She wants the floor, I yield.
Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
I mean, no, I'm, just in full agreement, um, you know, we are talking about like, you know, qualified fiduciary, food banks qualified fiduciary. So, there, I don't really see a, a need to hold that up, so hopefully we can get that going. Um, but I would like to know how much money that we have left in our, um, community grants. I want to know how much we have left in the community grants.
We'll have the answer for that at the end of this week, we're working on that. We've been working, that's the, our top priority for this week is to get that report done. It'll be done by Friday.
Okay, sounds like the plan. And then, um, because I know that we have received some, some other monies coming to the city. And so, if we do have these leftover monies, like we said, we can do things, like do ward-specific things. And if we have any additional monies, we could look towards, um, looking at more home repair for the residents. Because I know that we also receive the allocation from the marijuana funds. And so, I will ask, um, next meeting, next finance chair, I'm just giving you a heads up. We have put that on the agenda, so we can get a, uh, idea of how those, I think it was like six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So, we can see how those, uh, marijuana funds were, were being spent in the city here. Because I, I believe that we were supposed to get another allocation in February, I believe, because it's yearly. So, we do have some additional money that we can do some things with for the residents. And so, um, let's go ahead and get these things in motion, thank you, Mr. Moore, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Quick question, um, if we can get all the categories, what's left in ARPA, an entire breakdown of it? If we can get that, that way we can read it ourselves, so we can be transparent with the public.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to, that, that ends, concludes this, um, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn by the Councilwoman of the Seventh Ward, is there support?
Support.
Supported by the Councilwoman of the Second Ward. The vote to adjourn.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, zero no?
The vote is seven yes, zero no, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-five.
Yes, I think you want to get on in this, this, the lawyer was like, you know, cut me, you're gonna die. Eat the cake, Eddie, eat the cake. That burns.
And no wonder you were not my fault, this is fantastic, but we should have just, this time, you know, break my heart. Way past.
The time is now seven thirty-four P M. on Wednesday, October twenty-second. I hereby call this legislative committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary. Mr. Al Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Machette?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have six members present. We have six members present. It is now time for the reading of the disorderly persons city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section thirty-one dash ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning if they persist in disrupting the meeting. That individual will be subject to arrest, violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there requests for agenda changes and/or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for changes and/or additions, it is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box will be placed, was placed at the entrance to the city council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment, with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam, excuse me, Madam Secretary. Ariel Mitchell?
Hello, I'm Ariel Mitchell. Uh, for the record, uh, Mr. Ananek just got the billions of dollars for the Oprah, that dope that are fun, and now it's a situation, it's brewing right now at Hurley Hospital again, like that time when the young man said, keep your black hands off of my baby, and they didn't do it, and they sued Hurley Hospital.
Excuse me, Mr. Mitchell, I'm gonna pause your time, then I'm just gonna ask you to be mindful, okay? Go ahead.
Hey, go, like I was saying, it's a situation at Hurley Hospital right now. One of my native friend had a, a baby two, three days ago, her grandbaby, and her husband happened to be there, when the doctor came out, he announced that what Mr. Ananek was talking about. And, and she was gonna breastfeed the baby, and he said, I don't think you should do that, lady. And now, instead of letting the baby go, let him go home with the doctor, with the mama that kept the baby, and the husband was there. And he's Indian, he got, he got weapons on him, and that's, and where Ananek at anyway? You see, he done gone already without, but anyway, to these TV cameras, you, Ananek can see what's happening now. He ought, I believe, Ananek the kind of guy, he'll go tackle the situation before it get out of hand, like Mr. Moore. Trying to call the shot for the little ma-, the little mayor downstairs in that how you hitting looking dude, talking that junk, trying to get over on, 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 on the sixth ward and don't want to talk. He wanted, he wanted to say something anyway, got himself in more trouble. The mayor probably take him in the parking lot when he get back downstairs, was trying to run the city for him, and he told him what to say. He gonna, but it's two since then. And, and the second ward, it was talked up for us, very good, and you, and no more Philadelphia. Still makes sense, still makes sense, anyway. And another thing about, about, about the, uh, the water money, it's really about the water, ain't but. Now you put the dope, the dope trying to take over the city of Flint and all this medicine stuff. Zebworth, Webb, I can announce something, them names. But the kids, it's just like Ms. Jones was talking about, her son, and she put us on a missing son report, and all they had to do was push a button and go get him, just like that. And Chief Green still ain't up here, because he sound like the dope people's got it under hostages, like, like in Jamaica. The police chief asking for more money to educate people to just filibustering around, take me Flintstone to steal okey dokey. And Machette don't want nobody messing up somebody's speech, talking about, don't go there, you talking about what? The brown peoples and the bo-, the red peoples, the, the black and yellow, and stay tuned, America.
Thank you, next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Taylor Sampson. Next speaker, Madam Secretary.
Stanley Wood.
Next speaker, Madam Secretary, Bill Kessler.
Hello. All right, so, um, yeah, I wanted to urge, I wanted to, I, I came in a little late at the beginning, so I missed the initial public comment, but I do want to talk about the, the, um, resolution that was considered about the, the flock cameras and the ALPRs, the automatic license plate readers that this, uh, committee considered and sent to, sent to council. So, I want to urge you all to pause the expansion of this contract, to consider the impacts of this mass surveillance network, and devote the limited resources of this city to addressing the conditions that produce crime, instead of creating a system that tracks the movement of literally every single person in this city. So, as we've heard before, and I'm sure you all know, flock cameras capture and record not only the license plate of every single car that passes under the cameras' view, but they also document the unique features of the passing cars. With the expansion of this network, it will be virtually impossible for anyone in the city of Flint to drive anywhere while being, while maintaining their privacy. I know that you all consider this expansion as a measure to increase public safety, but this makes me personally, as a resident of Flint, feel less safe. This is the technological equivalent of a police tail on every car in the city, documenting where we go and when. Employing that level of police surveillance on innocent civilians is a clearly unethical and a violation of the U.S. citizen's right to privacy, but it was, but what is done through a camera lens, it is considered justified. The Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution protects those within its borders from unreasonable search and seizure. I believe this technology to violate that right, and there are litigations with flock currently working their way through the courts. There have been several documented cases of the federal government and ICE using flock cameras to track down and kidnap innocent civilians, and as a violent campaign to purge this country of those it deems less than human. Is that something that member of this, members of this council want to be a part of? So, I urge you, press pause on this decision to expand, expand the flock, flock network in this city. Consider the implications of technology, and direct these limited funds in this grant, which is, um, the grant through which this money comes from is, um, has, has an umbrella use to be. able to use to combat juvenile delinquency, is one of the things. So, there is a way to reallocate these funds to programs that actually support the youth and prevent crime from happening, as opposed to just measures of surveillance that are used to prosecute.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary.
Next speaker is Tanya Jones.
Tanya Jones again. I'm here advocating for my son, and I'm tired, I know y'all be tired, okay? This is a long hours. I greatly appreciate y'all for what y'all do, but I wanna explain, like, the Norcans, you know, when you speak on them, it don't take one. Sometimes, I have to administrate this to my son before. He has OD'd three times. So, sometimes it don't take one. I have to give him two, okay? Because once the drug is in your system, you gotta get it pushed out. So, they don't just, don't take this one box. It might take four of them. So, when people speaks on it, it just don't take one of the boxes that need to give out freely, it takes more. So, I just wanna educate people on, when it comes to this, this is a lifesaver. And I know I have friends that has overdosed just from a pill. Somebody might give you a pill for, it might be, or Norco, or Vicodin, or whatever, and it's laced with Fentanyl. So, I mean, this is serious, and that's why I come up here, 'cause I wanna explain, this is serious. What's going on out here with this opioid crisis is real. I don't know if anybody visit other states, you know? Flint is too small to become us, you know? Have you ever seen Tent City? Okay? We'll turn around, it'd be Tent City. People, we, right now, we in a government, you know, shutdown. So, you're talking about food. With this opioid crisis, what's going on? You gonna see addicts everywhere, homeless, Tent City. We don't need, Flint is too small for it. Let alone when people catch HIV and people walking around here sick. So, I'm saying, this is real, serious, you know what I'm saying? My thing is, I got my son, I got my son a hundred and ten percent. He got, he got a home, but he don't wanna stay at his house. He out there in the street right now, I don't know where he at. But guess what? I got him. I haven't seen my son in three weeks, in three weeks. So, I'm fighting for guardianship, because I'm trying to save my son. But these people that, you know, with the opioid money, wherever it go, that's why y'all need to really make sure it go to where it need to. It's a place called Grace Hope in Pontiac. It's great. And their, their community, how they got their program set up, is a ten. Where I want my son to go, my kids never went to Flint school. They never even was a part. My son came over into Flint, somewhere I tried to keep him away from, once I found that he was autistic. And everything he done came to, guess what? It's been horrible. So, I did what I, I was a concerned mother, I am a concerned mother. God bless me with kids. So, that's why I'm doing, and I'm advocating, because that was my blessing from above, and I'm gonna keep on doing what I'm doing, okay? And greatly, I be wondering where these pastors at. When y'all be talking about the churches, I don't, I don't go, I don't believe in organized religion. I believe in God, because God done kept me here, not these churches, 'cause not one church done contacted me and said, "How is your son doing?" When my son was a member of Ebenezer. If she don't come down off the thing and say, Candace don't come say, "How Michael doing?" And she was a member. Long as he was singing in choir and tiding, oh, guess what? But it's about the loss. Because guess what? With God, he's gonna be found. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary.
That was the last speaker.
Thank you. Seeing as how that is the end of public speaking, it is now time for council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers, only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as how there's no one who wishes to speak during council response, we'll move on to reconsiderations. Resolution two-five-zero-three-four-seven-dash-T, what is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider two-five-zero-three-four-seven-dash-T.
There is a motion on the floor to reconsider resolution two-five-zero-three-four-seven-dash-T, which is the issuance of public notice proposed modification for the city of Flint Sewer Use Ordinance for Industrial Pretreatment Program, Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy. Is there support? I will support it.
Mr. Al Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
No.
You have four yes, three no?
We have four yes, three no. That reconsideration fails. Moving on to the consent agenda, seeing as how there is nothing on the agenda.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Support.
Moving and properly supported by the councilwoman in the second ward. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Al Alamin is not in. You have seven yes, zero no.
We have seven yes, zero no. The time is now seven forty-seven P.M. On October twenty-second. I hereby adjourn this legislative committee. Moving on to Governmental Operations Committee. The time is now seven forty-eight P.M. On Wednesday, October twenty-second. I hereby call this Governmental Operations Committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Al Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No, present. You're present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Machette?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have seven members present?
We have seven members present. It is now time for the reading of the Disorderly Persons City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section thirty-one dash ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning if they persist in disrupting the meeting. That individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meeting. Are there any requests for agenda changes and/or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for agenda changes and/or additions, it is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box was placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam Secretary.
Ariel Mitchell?
Hello. Hello, I'm Ariel Mitchell. I'm speaking on the Hassel Center on Homestreet, it's no longer on Homestreet no more, it's at the corner of Mott Park over in the sixth ward over where, where, I can't hardly call people's name no more. And it gonna be a maze center, it should, and we the people request a grocery store be built right along, and with all the, 'cause people's dockies gotta eat too. How about that, Ms. Shaq? And, uh, like I was saying, we, we go, that duct tape made my friend's name fall off the building, and now we gonna put this, gonna do it right, when they move over there in that, what's that, Corona Road or something, I still don't know where, I know it's over in your ward, the sixth ward, right? Okay, but we the people, still that Reverend, what's his name, talking about fifteen years to get a supermarket, and people, you see what's gonna happen right now? People, the grocery's going up, and people's, like this guy talking this stuff, I call him, "How you hit the..." But I was threatening to say, "Don't call him that no more." But, and the dude ain't was here yet. I mean, what, I call him Tarzan, oh, second ward, gave him two strokes dealing with a black woman, and he still can control, he started to leave, but he didn't, because he concerned about Ward One. If he can stay home and get paid, so could he can stay home and do business too, because out there in Mount Morris putting peoples in Flint on notice, every time he gonna put somebody on, a house arrest, got Mount Morris' name on it. Talking about Ms. Burke, why you tell his significant other to give, turn in his telephone, and he gonna pull the woman hair, and you know where I'm talking, I ain't mentioned on that. I mean, I did mention, the people's can figure out what's going on. You see, the main peoples in, in there ain't was here for running the city, talking junk what they, they could have left in, in the all them ISIS. They already here, already know or not, but like I say, the national guys protecting them, because they be grabbing peoples like me and talking, "Who you, what you, where you from, what you..." And, uh, and then asking them all trick questions, and they're like, "Get boy back." And then, then the police weren't even do, 'cause they ain't cohoos with them, and all that junk, you know? But, forget them ISIS people, they, the peoples who resist them, they really is true Americans, and they don't know. The ISIS peoples act like they know that, they don't give a care, 'cause the Democrat, you know? Just like the one came in the White House, coming, and one police got stuck in the door and killed his own self by accident, you know? Hey, stay tuned, America.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary.
Taylor Sampson, eighth ward resident. On this meeting agenda, there is the recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'm very curious to see how that vote's gonna play out. Liddell, LaShawn, Judy, Candace, I think you really need to seriously consider how you're gonna play this game, because you're supporting a known abuser in this community that sits up on that council with you in the first ward. So, if you go ahead and vote for this, it's basically undoing everything that you've been fighting since July against all of us. I still can't believe you're supporting someone who is being charged with a felony for attempted strangulation and a misdemeanor for domestic violence. I don't care if he's your friend. Friends hold each other accountable, parents have kids go to jail every day, and they still will say that they're guilty. I don't understand how the mayor is still behind him. What does that say to people in your wards? I've already had people in the fourth and the seventh ward tell me how disappointed they are because you're supporting Leon, because they're DV survivors. They don't feel supported by you. Those are your voters. Those are the people that will continue to support you or not. If you continue to play games like this, especially with something as serious as attempted strangulation, you will lose your seat next year. Put aside all the mess you've already been doing, look at just this tonight. So, I suggest you actually think about this, and you really read it over, and you consider what you should be doing for the people in your community. Forget all of us that come up here and speak to you, you don't respect us or listen to us anyways. Think about the people in your community that are DV survivors. I'm saying that as someone who's literally sat there seeing horrors, because people were brought in who were raped, people who were beat up, like their faces are literal pulp by people that they love, or someone complete strangers. I've had to sit through there, hold their hands while they're examined, have to sit there while the cops are assholes, while they're trying to fill out reports. I've had to answer those safeline calls and walk someone through a safety plan in case they are actually going to get away. I've had to sit there and do all that. I'm not coming up here and speaking out of my butt, okay? This is lived experience. Don't take my own domestic issues into account here. Take me as someone who's literally worked hand in hand and had to help these women in our community. Take my word seriously. I've already came up here and spoke on this multiple times, and I'm disappointed Leon isn't here tonight, because I really wanna make him sit there and vote for this resolution. Make him uncomfortable. Make him as uncomfortable as he's making all of us be, having to sit and watch him in that seat making decisions for our community. Think about it.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary.
Next speaker is Bill Kessler.
Next public speaker, Madam Secretary.
Hello, Tanya Jones again. I'm here. The million dollar thing sounded like hocus pocus. You remember hocus pocus for the autism? To me, it sound like hocus pocus. I know my opinion doesn't matter, but me hearing it, it really sound like hocus pocus. So, that's my opinion on that. You know, you need to look more into it, because when it comes to the opium crisis, it's really real, and it really needs to be watched over. I like how Mr. Jarrett, yeah, Mr. Jarrett, you know, he's very thorough about what he does, and he don't just listen to anything, and Ms., right here in the, next to Ms. Burns, and Ms. Burns, you know, if he listening or whatever, could y'all really, really listen to what they saying, because like I said, I was here during hocus pocus time about autism and just whatever, whatever, it's not that easy. I got my autism shirt on, 'cause like I said, my son, he's autistic, so, yes, I'm looking into a lot of it. And I asked before about the opioid money when Leon got a hundred and fifty thousand. So, I don't understand, like, why he got that money and for his May program, when it comes to whatever he stands for, his organization, I mean, I thought he would be here, and that's why I've been coming for, I can ask him, a hundred and fifty thousand, you know, you guys never answer it. But when it comes to opioid, you know, I mean, I think he deal with people when they get out of prison and stuff, you know? So, the opioid crisis, he got a hundred and fifty, you know, so, I'm, nobody ever answered that to the people, 'cause we all would like to know. But, you know, so, that's my thing, is the opioid crisis is real, autism is real, sick cell is real, the people is real. So, I'm a concerned mother, and when it seems like when people concerned, y'all don't like them when they concerned, you know? Like Ms. Liddell Lewis put me on her, "I'm blocked off your page, but you put me up there on the Mu Mu, and I'm blocked," you know? So, I gotta get it off other people's page, your comments of what you say. You know, everybody, Flint is small, everybody talk. You know, you comment, you post me, you know what I'm saying, for your views, for your views, 'cause you put it on your page. So, you got views off of it. I got a hundred and twelve friends on my face, on my face. I'm not doing this to be seen. I'm not doing this for money, for likes. I'm doing this because it's my son's life. But you posted me in the Mu Mu as I was stressed and concerned about, you said I was approaching her in a aggressive manner. It was a lie. I don't come up here to be aggressive. I'll come up here, if you take what I'm doing as being aggressive, you wrong. I'm here because, guess what, I'm concerned about my son. I'm concerned about other parents that's going through and don't know what to do. Eric Mays direct me, Ken Scott direct me, my doctor, my psychiatrist direct me. Look how you looking. You a joke. You don't wanna joke, 'cause guess what, they vote next year. And no guess what, in the end, God see everything. You think it's a joke? Keep smiling. Keep smiling, 'cause everything that everybody going through, it gonna hit your family. I promise you, karma is real. You very arrogant. I don't even know how you got your seat. I don't. In a piece of paper, in a degree, whatever, but your soul is wicked. You wicked as ever.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary.
That was the last speaker.
Seeing as how that was the last public speaker, it is now time for council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers, only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as how there's no one who wishes to speak during council response, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I move to send the consent agenda to Congress.
There's a motion to send the consent agenda to council. Is there support? Moving and properly supported by the councilwoman in the second ward, are there separations?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
I would like to, well, it'll be a total separation.
Total separation it is. Moving on to resolution two-five-zero-three-five-five-dash-T, which is the charitable gaming license for the Whaley Historic House Museum. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Send to council.
There's a motion to send to council by the councilwoman in the fourth ward, is there support? Moving and properly supported by the councilwoman in the second ward, is there discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward, you have the floor.
If I could have...
Absolutely. I believe there's some representatives from Whaley Museum here. Would you please join us at the lectern?
Hello, how are you?
Well, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you for being here. I met you before.
Yes, at the etiquette class.
Yes.
Etiquette class?
And we, etiquette class, etiquette dinner, and we had the little girl that didn't wanna come down, and I went up and, and we spoke with her, was able to get her down. It was nice to see the girls. First, it was with Madame Mercedes Etiquette and Manners class.
That's right.
And she had, your facility hosted them for their meetings, and then they had a final dinner where they were taught etiquette with napkins and how to use forks, spoons, napkins, how to speak, and they were dressed, I would say, like in their Easter wear, and it was so nice. And they had hats. Everybody had to have a hat. And so, that was great. So, here's my question. So, are you, so you're asking for a gaming license, and it's for, what are you gonna utilize it for?
Yes, so, from what we've understood, this gaming license is good for year round, and then you can apply for specific gaming licenses. We're gearing up to celebrate our second annual... New Year's Eve Gala. It's going to be a fundraiser to sustain us throughout the year. We were hoping this could be used for 50/50 raffles, silent options, things of that nature. We just want everything to be above board and everything to be documented so we could raise funds for the museum.
Okay. I mean, I've, I've always supported, and I remember the first time I went into Whaley House, I was younger, way younger, because I went to Central and in the Cultural Center, we've got so many things that you can do with the Whaley House being there. I remember when it caught on fire, people were, you know, they were repairing the roof and it had caught on fire and people like, oh my God. But I like to see, because historically, people of my color and my grandmother weren't allowed to be there. But to have the girls to be able to be there in the rooms where they once were only allowed to clean, but they were allowed to dine there was nice to see. There's so many artifacts or antiques that are in the home and they're not like they're behind a glass wall. And you know, you're sitting on antique furniture, you're sitting in the antique vases and different things. And so it's a turnaround and it's also a lesson. And I do know that Mercedes Kenny, who has the Madame Mercedes etiquette and manners class, taught them about that, that even in her time, that things like this, you know, we had to, to fight for in civil rights. And even before then, in this area, most people of color were only able to be domestics. I believe the Whaley House has a back staircase also where you couldn't use the front staircase. And so we have evolved and I hope we don't go back looking at some things. But having this facility and helping them to understand, because books are banned and history is being banned in certain states. But this was a very real thing. When we look at, you know, Whaley House, which is gorgeous, you know, but where the domestics were, which were people of color, the kitchens weren't big or, you know, fine. They're not like our, you know, they're not, they weren't decked out and, you know, new appliances and, you know, overhead lighting and all of that. They were just basically for to, you know, utilize to get, make the food, get it, get it in, get it out. It wasn't a gathering place to where kitchens are now. And so it's a different time. So I support what you do and I appreciate allowing Whaley's House to be opened up to little girls or young women. Some are, I'm gonna say young ladies. I want to be proper when I say that and who they are. And to teach them some of the things that is a lost art, which is manners, etiquette, and to do it in a facility where they're able to sit, touch around the antiques that are around that their grandmothers and great grandmothers wouldn't have had the opportunity to, to do. So I support this.
Thank you so much. And if I may say for the record, it was a pleasure hosting those children and it's nice to be able to say that we're like Grandma and Grandpa's house and all are welcome inside. So thank you.
Thank you. I yield the floor, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the first round of discussion? Anyone in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Fourth Ward.
Thank you for coming to us and doing things the right way. You'd never have to come before us again to get this, to get recognized, in case you didn't know. And I was thinking about that and I thought, wait, maybe you think you need to do that every time or annually. Once we recognize you, you're done.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Although we do like to see you.
Oh.
Anyone else in the second, I'm sorry, are you done? I'm sorry.
I'm done. I'm yield.
Anyone else in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else in the second round of discussion, this is the roll call vote for Resolution 250355-T, which is the charitable gaming license, the Whaley Historic House Museum. Mr. L. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jared?
Yes.
You have a seven yes, zero no? The vote of seven yes, zero no, this resolution passes the council. You will not need to come back Monday. I don't foresee anyone separating it, so thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, enjoy the rest of your evening. Moving on to Resolution 250356-T, which is the recognition Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2025.
Madam Chair.
Is this day right? But it's something, never mind. Something's wrong with the date, but we'll fix it. Councilwoman in the Sixth Ward, you see it?
I don't see what you're saying.
Something's wrong with the date, but we'll fix it. Councilwoman in the Sixth Ward?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you see it?
Just a typo in the head title.
Yeah.
October ends.
It's fine in a resolution.
I would like to send this to council, please.
There's a motion to send this to council. Is there support?
Support.
Moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the Fourth Ward, is there discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Sixth Ward.
Thank you. I do want to state that now it's more prevalent that recognizing October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so I did, I was the one who did ask to have the resolution to be, to be drawn up because I think we need to talk about there, there have been some, some severe cases of domestic violence. We had a young lady who was actually choked with a belt, dismembered in a bathtub. And we've also had another one who, Princess Williams, about five to six weeks ago, she had called for police the day before and she said no one had shown up and she was killed by her abuser. She had been a victim of domestic violence for a couple of years and she left behind a two-month-old child. Also, I want to state with Decretia or Kiki Martin, was domestic violence victim who had been dealing with domestic violence for over 12 years. Dealing with domestic violence is serious. I understand when Taylor stated it triggers her, it triggers a lot of women and especially when we see that we have got unfortunately a council member who was charged with a felony and of less than murder but with strangulation for domestic violence. I don't want domestic violence to go, or those voices to go unheard. So the resolution proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October, says by the council, domestic violence, by the city council. Domestic violence is a serious issue that affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and genders across Michigan, across Michigan and the nation. And the 2025 theme with survivors always calls for solidarity, safety, and support for those affected by domestic violence. And domestic violence includes physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse causing devastating and lasting trauma to individuals and families. The Michigan State Police reported that 67,816 domestic violence instances in 2023, and domestic violence remains a leading cause of death for pregnant women and members of the LGBTQ+ plus community. Report that intimate partners violent at rates equal to or higher than heterosexual individuals. And the black community experiences disproportionately higher rates of intimate partner violence with over 45% of black women experiencing physical or sexual violence and intimate partner. And Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness, educate the community, and support the efforts of organizations that provide vital services to victims and survivors. It is a moral and civic responsibility to work towards the elimination of domestic violence, to hurt, to hold perpetrators accountable, and to empower survivors with the support they need. I have very strong convictions about this because we can no longer harbor people who commit such acts. I sat in a court with Judge Vicky Haley to listen to a colleague when Officer McCain stated that the victim had been struck in the face, lacerations, and there were signs of strangulation. That was beyond disturbing that any woman in this day and age would have to endure that type of violence. We as a body, as a council, can do something to change it. We are having to face even a difficult decision with Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, who gave a resolution to have Councilman Leon Alamin step down so that he would not be a distraction because of his domestic violent felony charges. This is a serious, serious charge and for women, it is triggering women across not only in our city and our county, but our nation, that we are supposed to lead by being an example. It should not be tolerated. So to make sure that we support victims of domestic violence, understanding that there needs to be an end, that we know that one in four women will experience domestic violence and in their life, and that is actually underreported. Only 34% of women who are struck by their assault, by their person, their abuser, goes to an emergency room. I will be supporting this and I'm asking my colleagues to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the first round of discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I fully support this resolution proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Behind every statistic is a survivor, a mother, a daughter, a neighbor, your sister, who's had to fight to reclaim her safety and dignity. We cannot look away. Raising awareness is not enough. We must strengthen prevention, expand resources, and hold abusers accountable. I stand with every survivor in Flint and the organizations that's out there doing the hard work on the front lines. Together, we must foster a city culture where safety, respect, and healing are non-negotiable. I fully support this resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Second Ward.
Thank you so much. I definitely support the spirit of this resolution. However, I don't support the unjust conviction of a colleague. What we do have, we have a criminal justice system. And if we believe in this system like we say it will, justice will prevail. If we have a victim and our colleague was the perpetrator, evidence will show and justice will prevail. But what I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna sit here and I'm not gonna illuminate victims suffering at the expense of my colleague. That's not what I'm here to do. And it's very disappointing to hear that we have colleagues that instead of talking about the spirit of the resolution and the people in the community that it has affected, you know, we have people that they were murdered. It was proof who murdered them. We're convicting our colleague in the court of the public and it's unfair. You know, bringing this resolution demonizing our colleague for something that he has not been convicted of is very unfair. That's just like me putting forth a resolution for National Pay Your Water Bill Month. I'm not gonna do that because we want to keep the main thing, the main thing. And the main thing is this. This is Domestic Violence Month? It is. It's something that we acknowledge all throughout the world.
She can't help herself.
But what it's not, it's not a time to throw shots at our colleague.
Just throw a shot.
Any shots that need to be fired will come from, you mentioned Judge Haley and the other people that are charged with this case. So it is very disrespectful. It was, it's irresponsible and it's flat out tacky. We're talking about teaching young ladies etiquette and stuff and this is primary. This is a primary example of what not to do, especially as a grown woman in our elected seats. Now do I support standing with domestic violence victims? You better believe it. I mean, I'm just saying, we can laugh, but we have a colleague that threatened to beat me up. We have a colleague that lunged at me from that chair. We have a colleague that have verbally attacked people on this body and I'm one of them. But I never heard one person up here that's fighting so hard for this resolution say anything outside of Councilwoman Chat and the former councilperson Eva Worthy. Who heard that? When the gentleman sit up here and calls people names, calls females names weekly, we don't see anybody that supports domestic violence, verbal or physical, say anything about it. So if we gonna stand for domestic violence, let's stand all the way. But if we're gonna use our seats as weapons, we need to sit down and reevaluate while we're here. Because this is not why I'm here. So when the courts have their ruling, then we will address what's happening here. Until then, let's let them figure it out and we do our job in these chambers. And these jobs consist of passing money and making ordinances so we can move this city forward. We can laugh, we can giggle, but you're dealing with someone's life here. You're dealing with someone's father here. You're dealing with someone's son here, someone's brother. And it's not funny. So thank you so much, Madam Chair, for being allowed to speak. But I just want to compel this body that when you do and if you do choose to vote for this, let's vote for it in the correct spirit, in the spirit that we're supporting people that are suffering through this, people that have been charged and convicted, not people that have personal vendettas and want to smear people's name. Not cool, not the way, and that's not what I'm here for. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman in the Fourth Ward, you have the floor.
I 100% agree with Dr. Lewis. In the spirit, I, I support this policy. My grand, my mother's cousin was murdered by her ex-husband who later committed suicide. We know it was him. Soon as she started bringing up our colleague, she turned me off, telling you that right now. My sister has been abused by partners of both sexes. But there should be no names attached. Because there was, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the first round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else who wishes to speak in the first round of discussion, is there anyone who wishes to speak in this round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the Sixth Ward.
Yep, thank you. Well, the fact that they decided to take, and that's their choice, to kind of divert it, but it is a very real thing with the news and what happened and with the Genesee County Prosecutor, the prosecutor, the prosecutor charged him. It's not about him. I mentioned Princess William, but y'all didn't hear that part. I also mentioned the one with the killing with a young lady was choked with a belt and then dismembered in a tub. You missed that part. But Liddell, you were harboring a fugitive while he was on the run. And what you did not know was she was able to track.
Point of order. Please pause her time. Please pause her time. What's, what's your point of order?
Point of order is Councilwoman Burns is, I can't say speaking to the motives, but she's saying that I'm harboring a fugitive.
Yep, he was able to track.
Councilwoman Burns, I'm gonna ask you to stop going down that road. Please continue.
Yeah, I'll stop going down that road, but she opened that door. She opened it.
Continue, Councilwoman Burns.
My point is, speaking to domestic violence, that each part, wherever he went, he was at her house and she could time when he had an open warrant. She brought this up. I did not. So when we talk about how disrespectful, how disrespectful that this woman had to go into hiding, she is somebody's mother. She is somebody's daughter. She does matter. She is loved by people. And so when you sit up here instead of, and he's not even here, technically, he lives on Berkeley Street with me, not even on my, because there's a registered sex offender living in that house.
What's your point of order?
That's where he's tethered to.
Please, Councilwoman Burns, please. Go ahead.
You know, no, no, we're gonna let her finish.
Councilwoman Burns, continue.
So when we talk about this, because with your, your fake accusations, that you could not allow this to go for the other women and disproportionately that black women are victims of domestic violence. But you made yourself a victim. You made yourself the victim and never experienced domestic violence. I have said it here, Leon triggers my domestic violence issue. I have said it here, Leon triggers my domestic violence issues. And how dare you support him, and you harbored him at your home.
Councilwoman Burns, can we please pause the time? So you were supposed to be directing any and all comments to the chair, not to Councilwoman Lewis. So, Councilwoman Burns, Councilwoman Burns. So, you cannot continue down the line that you're going. You cannot direct anything to her. That is the council rule, and you know it. So please move on from that line.
It's the council rule, and she broke it, but you didn't stop her.
Please move on from that line.
You did not stop her with the shots she took.
And I, I gave you some liberty as well, but you kept going. So please stop.
My point is this, we can't change the fact that on July tenth, Kiki Martin was strangled. It happened. The police showed up. They gave testimony in a court, and it was bound over to a higher court. But it showed in the hospital room that she had bruises on her body, on her neck, on her head. Her head was yanked. It was punched in the back of the head. And know what else? Because I was there in the court. You were too, with, with your hoodie on. But she had, she had the bruises. And, and to not be able to, what kind of person finds solace supporting the person who did the viol? I don't understand that. I don't understand that. This is about domestic violence. I'm supporting it. Vote no if you vote to.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the second round of discussion? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you so much. Um, so, um, I'm just gonna just sum it up just real quick. Yes, everyone have loved ones here. And that's why it's important for us to intentionally be fair to everyone's loved ones. To Ms. Martin's loved ones. To Mr. L Alamein's loved ones. We need to make sure before any accusation is made, that we have facts. Just like a fact was just stated that Mr. Alamein live on Berkeley, the same street you live on. Can't really say that because no water usage, no water bill payment. So, is that really true?
A point of order. She's lying.
It's not important.
Can we pause the time? Can we pause the time?
Because I'm a lighter butt up.
Can I need your, excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, uh, Councilwoman Burns, Councilwoman Burns. Point of order to me.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
What's your point of order?
My point of order, she's not Jermaine. I live on Berkeley. You done fell asleep on my couch on Berkeley with your narcolepsy.
Councilwoman Burns, I gotta, I gotta ask you to stop. I know, but we gotta refrain from violating people's medical history though.
For not being Jermaine.
I understand.
And if she's watching how many times I flush my toilet.
So your point is, your point over this way, your point is she's not being Jermaine. Okay. Councilwoman Lewis, I'm gonna ask you to not go down that road.
Well, um, excuse me, Madam Chair, with all due respect, due to the fact she brought up her living on Berkeley. I wasn't going down Berkeley Street.
Point of order, where do, where do I live then?
She decide, again, she's taking.
Tell me, where do I live?
Please, okay, cut.
Because he took pictures of my house and my mother's house. Be outraged about that.
Councilwoman Burns, point of order directed this way. Councilwoman Burns, directed this way. Asking where you live is. Asking where you live is not a point of order.
Request for information.
What is your request?
Where do I live?
She doesn't know, and she's not gonna disclose your address. We can't disclose your address.
And she's been to my house more than once.
Again.
She's just a liar.
She stated. No need to lie. She stated that Mr. Alamein lived down the street.
He's tethered to Berkeley. Request for information. Does she know he's tethered to Berkeley?
Councilwoman Burns, I haven't even acknowledged the request. Listen. Listen. I understand, but Councilwoman Burns, I also wanna point out that when you were speaking, you got everything you wanted to say out. She hit you with a point of order maybe once. Now, we have done this several times of telling everybody, hey, stay Jermaine, don't open doors, don't do this, don't do that. But you have to understand that if one attack comes, somebody is probably going to rebuttal that attack. So you can't open doors and launch charges. This is supposed to be about domestic violence victims. I would love if we could just continue on, but Dr. Lewis, it is your time.
I definitely appreciate that. And again, if we just keep the main thing the main thing, we wouldn't be here. And did I wanna go down that road? I don't. But we must accentuate this behavior. The first piece is, if we're gonna acknowledge Domestic Violence Awareness Month, let's acknowledge that in its totality and move on. Let's not take cheap shots at colleagues, especially ones that are not here. Not what we're here for. You let the court deal with convictions, not here. The second piece is, if we wanna talk about people and where they live, don't get out of order when someone points out where you haven't been living.
Uh, request for information.
Councilwoman Burns, what is your request?
She can put on the record where she think I live. I don't have no secrets.
Councilwoman Burns, that's not a question. That's not a proper request.
Well, where does she think I live?
It's not a proper request. Dr. Lewis, continue.
Thank you. I'm, I don't care where she live, but it's not on Berkeley. So let's not accuse the councilman. I'm just saying, you have water usage if you live in a house. People that live in a house, you flush your toilet, you wash your hands, you use water. Not months without doing so at that address. So please disclose to this body where you live. Since you wanna disclose where Councilwoman Alamein's supposed to be living, where you live.
Please pause the time. Please pause the time.
I'll give, and let me tell you, it's Judy was shaking her head.
So let me tell you, wait, you don't, you don't have the floor. Let me tell you something, what we're not gonna do. We're not disclosing addresses. We're not doing that. We're not putting people in harm's way. We're not pulling up to houses with other folks. We're not doing none of that. Stop. You have the floor.
I, thank you so much. So, again, back to the point. I am closing the Berkeley door. And then I'm gonna close the door on our councilman, and whatever legal battles that he may be facing in, in court, may justice be served. But I will not demonize anyone up here for anything that you have not been charged or convicted with. The cheap shots at me harboring a fugitive, preposterous. But in terms of, of people driving people with questionable mental health to my doorstep, factual and on film.
Request for information.
Please pause the time.
You check Leon for taking pictures of my mother and where my child lives also.
Pardon me, Councilwoman Burns. Councilwoman Burns, that's supposed to be directed toward the chair.
Okay, I'm down. She keep taking shots.
Directed toward the chair.
Councilwoman, now, this is, again, shows why we might need some drug testing. We have a councilwoman who can, who acts irate. She won't stay with order. She won't talk on her turn. She keeps interrupting. This is very questionable.
A point of order. She needs.
Please pause the time.
She needs to stay Jermaine, 'cause I don't have a drug problem. When I get one, I'll let you know. But by the choice of your wigs, you got one.
Councilwoman Burns. So Councilwoman Burns, what we're not gonna do, you have no more times to use privileged motions and take the floor, and then you have no more times to direct it any way other than the chair. So, come on now. Go ahead, Councilwoman Lewis.
Yeah, I'm just gonna wrap it. I, I don't support this, the way it is brought. So, I, I support the victims, but the way that it's politicized, absolutely not.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the second round of discussion? Okay, so I'm gonna take some time. I am very clear on the fact that the way that this was bought, it, it was very much political. I'm, I'm clear on that, right? I don't think that it was bought in good faith. I don't, I don't agree that it was bought here to do anything other than cause embarrassment for someone. But what I do agree with are the words on this page and the fact that we all know someone who was affected by domestic violence. I am struggling here because there are two things happening right now that are true. This is completely political for the person that bought it here, but that doesn't change the fact that this should be acknowledged by the people that are subject to it. Go ahead, Councilwoman Burns.
It's not political. First of all, Robert rules forty-three point twenty-one, you're speaking to my motive.
You're correct.
It's not, thank you, it's not political, uh, to me.
Okay.
Seeing abuses, bruises on women is a problem for me.
All right. I understand. Afair mentioned statement stood on. I do believe that as a city, we should recognize this. I also don't want my recognition to be treated as an indictment of someone. And so this puts us in a very precarious situation. I am going to support the fact that we have domestic violence abuse victims and that this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I will support that. I'm not supporting any public indictments, any political indictments, any other whatever that comes with this. I am supporting actual victims who live through this. Um, I am supporting both the women and men who need us as a city to recognize this. With that said, I will yield my time. This is the roll call vote for Resolution two-five-zero-three-five-six dash T, which is the resolution proclaiming October twenty-twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Flint, Michigan. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Dr. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
I didn't hear.
No.
Okay. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett? You have five yes, two no?
The vote is five yes, two no. Resolution two-five-zero-three-five-six dash T has moved to council. Moving forward, um, special order discussion item two-five-zero-three-three-zero dash T, which is discussion item for water testing, the thirty-four to thirty-six hundred blocks of Brownell Boulevard. A discussion item as requested by Council President Lewis to discuss issues concerning water testing within the thirty-four hundred through thirty-six hundred blocks of Brownell Boulevard. Uh, Dr. Lewis?
It's been a few years since Mr. Roy Fields came here with his pictures showing his body, um, saying that, um, that the water have basically put him and his family in harm's way. Councilwoman, um, Winfrey Carter, as well as Councilman Murphy, they put, uh, a res, well, I guess a special order on the floor to have that block tested, and this body agreed to do so.
Oh, can we pause? I'm sorry. Um, we'll start with a fifteen-minute and then go from there. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
Yeah, so, um, so we voted to have that done. Um, it was not done in the manner that we said that it was supposed to be done. We had our water department go, and they went to test the resident's homes, and the residents did not want the water department doing it, because in our order, it said that an outside entity, and there have been no outside entity to test the water. So, we need to formally, um, make it happen, 'cause they're still having, um, according to Mr. Fields, his, uh, his shower brush that he hangs on his shower, and the only thing that happens, water drips on it, it's still turning black. And he still has concerns with black, uh, stuff forming around his toilet. He has concerns. And so I just want us just to make good on what we said that we were gonna do. So, 'cause we said that we were gonna do it. So I would like to, um, for us to, um, do all things necessary to have an outside firm come in and test the water. I've been trying to work with administration to get it done, um, several, uh, Mr. Ken, um, and the ones before him, it has not happened. I don't know if it's being held up intentionally. I have no clue. I just know that it's not happening. So, and it's real clear, an outside agency tests the thirty-four to thirty-six hundred block of Brownell Boulevard. That's all we need to have happen. No excuses. Test their water so we can move forward.
Do we have the, was it, was it done by resolution or? It was done by resolution?
Yes.
Do we have the resolution number and what the resolution reads?
I don't, I do not have it, and I see that the clerk is not here, so, um, I'll go ahead and ask for that, but it definitely needs to happen. So, and I'll, I'll yield the floor if we have anyone else who wanna comment on that.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I actually don't remember if it was done by resolution, but we actually did make a motion and approved it. Maybe we do need to do that formally into a form of a resolution and, and get that done so that it, it will happen. Because I thought it had. I know that at one point I had spoken to, um, who Ma'am was before, Mr. Ken. Um, and he says, I don't know how to test for this. And, um, and I said, well, we, you gotta, you've gotta figure it out. I said, we mandated you to do this. And so it's absolutely imperative that this testing gets done. So if we need to do a resolution, then I'm going to request a resolution be written. Um, I will send an email to the clerk and ask her to have it ready for Special Affairs on Monday.
Request for information.
What is your request?
What would be the steps that we would take after testing? And if it were to come back in a positive way, that whatever is showing, what's gonna be our next step?
We would have to know what the results of those testings were.
I mean, but what, what, what are?
Because we may end up having to use.
The next step from that, after the water is tested in a resident's home, depending on what is found in the water, that it is either something that the city and/or state would have to take care of as far as, um, remedying and moving to the next steps to help the resident.
And, and we're only talking about, we're talking about two blocks here, but if there are concerns in other places, how are we gonna address those?
Oh, is that to me?
I, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just.
So I believe the reason that Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, and I can't speak to her, but she is here, and Councilman Murphy said these specific two blocks is because it's where the resident who had the extreme health scare and who's having the issues, that is why it was those specific blocks. But if something is found there, then again, that would be up to the city and the state to figure out if they test out more, or if residents come forward and say, I live within that area, I would like my water tested for those same things, because it might be a problem with the area.
And so I just want to, I'm bringing clarity, it's only one block.
It's one block?
It's one block.
Oh, it is, 'cause it's straight across, yeah.
What, what, what number?
The thirty-four hundred block to the, um, thirty-six hundred block.
And, um, Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Winfrey Carter.
I believe too, when we, um, voted on that res- resolution or that motion, um, I believe it was another, um, resident in that same immediate area that said something too, so. Um, and I would say we need to get a resolution with all of that in and then vote on it. And, um, and then, um, you know, the administration will then need to act on it, to get things, um, rolling.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are you, okay, Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
So there are many people on that block. Um, Arthur Woodson's auntie died of an aggressive cancer. She goes all the way down to like Stewart Street. You also have his cousin who lived in that house. They both died. Across the street, you have three people across the street who had an aggressive cancer. And also on the blocks over, I would say, I think, if we're gonna do it, we probably do a square, um, a square, because a lot of people, it's under-reported. And that, in that area, there are many people who have had aggressive cancers in that block, which if you, I believe Sunny Street, um, to Stewart, and even if we're taking it down to, um, Fleming Road, and even going, 'cause you lose a big part because of the park, down to Clyo Road. Um, to make sure that we're covering and collecting data on it. Because there are many people who have died or aggressive cancer. By the time they find out that they have it, it's in stage four. And it's aggressive. And they're telling them to make plans for burial. And soon after that, it's hospice. And some of the pictures I've seen, um, with Arthur Woodson's aunt and cousin, the skin literally in by two by four inches falling off and peeling off of the body. And I wouldn't wanna live in, in, in that area, because I know there's a lot of people who talk about it. That, and I don't know what would make it so different, but I went to Mr. Roy's house. He owns two homes right next door to each other on Brownell. And he's, he's in the section where his block is between Pasadena, and I think it's, is it, is it Sunny? But he lives in that block that is smaller homes. And it seems to have, to have affected that group. So I think if we're gonna test, I think we should do like a square diameter, um, because he's been complaining for years. And he was complaining, you know, and he's brought his pictures numerous times to show about his. And he was complaining, you know, and he's brought his pictures numerous times to show about his health. The mold that he said was growing in his bathroom, his faucets being deteriorating to where it's like the water ate him up on him. So I would say to do it much further, because we know those are problems. But what about the ones we don't know about? Because it goes down to Stewart. And I think his aunt, Arthur Woodson's aunt, lived three or four houses from the corner, I believe. I believe three, from Stewart Street on Brownell. Yeah. And so it's not just one block. It extends down. I know on the corner, it's a greenhouse. The gentleman, he died of cancer, is a friend of my father's. Another one, Mr. Peacock, who lived two doors down from him, he had cancer. And so we know that there is an issue in that area, a serious one. So I yield the floor.
Is there anyone else? So I will say that in that resolution, if you're going to use a third-party side, which that's what you all said, I would suggest that it's a third-party that does full panel. Third-party water testing is what you're asking for. If you are going to use third-party, I would suggest that the resolution says a full panel, so that you're testing for everything. Because just with some of the things that you all have described, it could be manganese, it could be iron, it could be arsenic, it could be hydrogen sulfide, it could be some sort of industrial chemical. It could be a number of things. And so you need someone that tests for everything that could possibly be in water. I mean, but when you say water testing, I could just test you for one or two things, and I've tested your water. So you, it needs to be specific that you need a full panel, yeah. You need to be tested for every possible thing. Yeah. That needs to be clear. And then not only that, when you say everything, it needs to be both metal and, no, no, no. Although that wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
But, um,
Cyanide?
No. We boil our water.
Lea?
No. It's on the tip of my tongue. Has to be metal and bacteria. There we go. Metal and bacteria. Any, just full. You need to check for, so it needs to be everything. No, literally. I'm just giving you an idea when I say everything. I mean, not just elements. It also needs to be bacteria testing. Make sure y'all give yourselves options too, of more than one third-party. It's only a few that you're going to get to do a full panel.
Well, you should give them the- The names in it that who you would recommend though.
Yeah.
Because if you're dealing with water.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during this special order? All right, well, seeing as how there's no one else who wishes to speak during the special order, Councilwoman Priestley has sent the necessary email to the city clerk to get that resolution prepared. Special affairs, I guess is where we'll put that, because this is years in the making. So, all right. Special Order 250330-T, which is the discussion for the item Water Testing, 3400 through 3600 Blocks of Brownell Boulevard, is closed. Moving to Special Order Discussion Item 250354-T, which is the discussion item for the Civil Service Commission. A discussion item as requested by Council President Dr. Liddell Lewis to discuss the Civil Service Commission. Dr. Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you. So before-
Can we, um, we'll do 20.
All right, so before Councilman Murphy passed away, he was adamant on making sure that we followed through with our Civil Service Commission. And it's in the charter. And there's no reason why we should not have had this done. And what is, is a commission, you can find it on page 51 in your charter. Hopefully, it's not an old charter. But, and it talks about their purpose, who's supposed to make up, who's supposed to make up this body and so forth. And so it says that there are three classes of Civil Service Commission members. Two to represent employees, two represent administration, and three to represent the public at large. Members should be chosen in the following manner, and everything is detailed here. We are waiting on Madam Clerk to send us the list of committees that we must field, and it should be hidden in our inbox any day now to see what commission and what board that we need to fill. But we also need to fill this. This needs to be added to the number. Some people may feel that it's not needed, that we haven't had it thus far, so why do it now? Because it's in the charter. Now, my whole push is because it's in the charter. And my goal is to follow the charter, follow the charter. And so if we couldn't get this Civil Service Commission established, you know, then this would be part of our duties. So just want to put that on the floor and hear what my colleagues have to say about the Civil Service Commission, so we can move forward with intentionality and also seriousness. Because we spoke about it, but never moved on it. It's time to move on it. Go ahead, ma'am.
Sorry.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
During budget hearings, I brought up this to Eddie. And he said, well, there's only like two positions that the Civil Service Commission would be covered. I believe he said there was two. Don't quote me on the exact number. And I said, well, it's in the charter. We've got to have it. And as far as, nothing's been done. So I agree with you. It's in the charter. We need to do it. Just like, much as I disagree necessarily with the Revenue Estimation Commission, that's in the charter as well.
The what?
The Revenue Estimation Commission. I find that to be one that will be very difficult to fill. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try to do it, if not actually do it. But the big thing is, is getting that Civil Service Commission in place. And I support that 100%. The question is, is how do we go about doing it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm going to just read this real quick for y'all then. Civil Service Commission Membership Terms and Removal. The Civil Service Commission shall serve in the interest of all the citizens of the City of Flint and shall consist of individuals selected on the basis of their reputation for fair-mindedness and objectivity. The Civil Service Commission shall serve without compensation. There are three classes of Civil Service Commission members. Two to represent the employees, two to represent the administration, and three to represent the public at large. Members shall be chosen in the following manner. Employee representatives, the City of Flint shall by ordinance provide for the nomination and election by City of Flint employees of two employee representatives. Administration representatives, the mayor shall appoint two administration representatives. The four members chosen under paragraphs A and B shall, within 60 days, unanimously select three persons as public at-large representatives. Except as limited in Section 5-101, any vacancies arising shall be filled within 60 days in the same manner as initial selection and only for the unexpired term. No member of the Civil Service Commission shall be a city employee during his or her term of office. All members of the Civil Service Commission must be a resident of the City of Flint. The chairperson and other officers of the Civil Service Commission shall be chosen from among the public at-large representatives. Terms of appointment, one person chosen by City of Flint employees shall have an initial term of five years, and the other person shall have an initial term of three years. One administrative, administration representative shall have an initial term of three years, and the other administration representative shall have an initial term of one year. Those chosen as public at-large representatives shall have initial terms of one, two, and four years. As initial terms expire, appointments shall be for five-year terms. And then removal, we don't need to get into all that. I was just answering your question about how does that work. The staff of the Civil Service Commission shall include a director. The director shall be appointed by and responsible to the Civil Service Commission. The Civil Service Commission may hire additional staff as required. Removal, the civil service director shall be subject to removal from office by a vote of five members of the Civil Service Commission. Such removal may occur only after a written notice for persons for removal are delivered to the director at least 30 days prior to the date of a public hearing conducted in accordance to the due process. The City of Flint shall provide in annual appropriations that are necessary and sufficient for the Civil Service Commission to conduct its business. So I do want to point out that piece there with the appropriations. We did adopt a budget. I don't believe there was anything for a Civil Service Commission in the budget. So in order to have, I'm sorry, what was that? And so, I mean, I may be mistaken. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But as of right now, we're going to move off of the assumption that there was not any money allocated to have a civil service commission staff. Therefore, that would have to be a budget amendment by the council in order to make that happen. And so it would be for the director and the director to have staff. And then also, I would assume we should know where they will be housed as well. So if you have a staff, you have employees. Apparently, you have somewhere to be a staff and an employee at, right? And the Civil Service Commission shall be responsible for enforcing the merit principle in all aspects of personnel administration in the City of Flint, including hiring and promotion, receiving investigation and deciding disputes between the City of Flint and any of its employees in the classified service, protecting City of Flint employees from political pressures, and advising the Human Resources Director, Mayor, and City Council concerning personnel administration. The Civil Service Commission shall not have the power to develop personnel policies, but shall have authority to make recommendations regarding revision of all personnel matters. For the, excuse me, for the performance of the foregoing duties, the Civil Service Commission may conduct investigations and hearings. And the powers given to the Civil Service Commission, according to our charter, they may hold hearings, subpoena witnesses, administer oath, take testimony, and require the production of evidence. To enforce a subpoena or order for the production of evidence or to impose any penalty prescribed for failure to obey a subpoena or order, the Civil Service Commission shall apply the appropriate court. The Civil Service Commission may delegate the powers to holding hearings, administering oath, and taking testimonies. So, and then it just goes into a little bit more about employee grievances and all of that. But you all can grab a copy of our charter, and all that information starts on page 51. And it goes all the way to page 55. But as of right now, I guess we look at how we start a Civil Service Commission, one. And then, two, we must look at if there was something placed in the budget for a director and staff. And then if not, we will have to make the appropriate adjustments. And then they'll also have to figure out where they will be housed, which hopefully that doesn't cost more money on us. Dr. Lewis?
So, so since this isn't as easy as people allocation, we have to hire some folks, et cetera, let's make it a priority to do it for the next budget. So we can do that next budget. But the revenue estimation, we don't need to have a director and stuff for that, do we? All right. Cool.
For the what? I'm sorry.
Committee of volunteers. Okay. Yeah, so, so yeah, so thank you all for the discussion. And yeah, so let's work on that next budget. And for the revenue estimation, let's go ahead and get that done, and also fill the rest of these committees.
Are we going to have a discussion about that one?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm just saying, obviously, this is not the time, because that's not what this time was set aside for. But are we going to do that next meeting? Next committee?
Revenue estimation?
Yes.
I think it'd be a good idea.
All right, Madam Secretary. I guess that's a no for Madam Clerk. That for the next, what committee am I in right now? For the next Governmental Operations Committee, we would like to have a special order discussion item for the revenue. What is it, Judy?
Estimation.
Revenue Estimation Committee. I'm assuming it's a committee. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this special order? Seeing as how there's no one else, this special order is closed. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Motion to get out of here.
There's a motion to adjourn by the Councilwoman in the second ward. Is there support?
Support.
Moved improperly supported by the Councilwoman in the fourth ward. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machet?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Seven yes, zero no. 8:56 PM, Monday, October 22nd. This Governmental Operations Committee meeting is adjourned.